Welcome, and we will start this meeting with the roll call Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne, everyone will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start this evening with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we'll start with the walked in Alzheimer's and Charlotte Long this year. When you come to the podium if you'll just state your name and address, we would appreciate it for the record.
Thank you. My name is Charlotte Long, my address is four eight four Fox Run Circle, Colorado Springs, Colorado, eight oh nine two one. Thank you for having me. Let me adjust this. Can you hear me? I want to thank you all for the opportunity to address Woodland Park City Council and provide a brief overview of Alzheimer's disease and the challenges it creates for tens of thousands of families in Colorado, including many in this community. My name is Charlotte Long, as I stated, and I work for the Alzheimer's Association of Colorado in the region of central Colorado. Our office is in Colorado Springs, but we serve Woodland Park and Teller County in addition to El Paso County. First of all, it is important to note that Alzheimer's disease is the number six killer of Americans and the leading disease among the top ten without a prevention, treatment, or cure. Here are a few specifics. There are an estimated five point five million Americans living with Alzheimer's, including sixty-nine thousand in Colorado. By 2020, there will be more Coloradans with Alzheimer's disease than there are seats in Mile High Stadium. By 2050, we project the number of Americans with Alzheimer's will approach fourteen million. Every sixty-six seconds, another person is diagnosed with Alzheimer's. Now let me tell you who is most affected by Alzheimer's disease. First, there are the people with the diagnosis. Two-thirds of Americans with Alzheimer's are women. It's a devastating disease that can last up to twenty years with progressive declines in health and the ability of the person to function independently. African-Americans are twice as likely as whites to be diagnosed, with Latinos fifty percent more likely. And then there are the caregivers. In Colorado, nearly a quarter of a million people volunteer their time, energy, and resources for their loved ones. They make personal sacrifices, including direct financial support, time away from work, and neglecting their own personal health. And finally, there's the cost. Nearly one dollar of every five dollars in Medicare funds is spent on people with Alzheimer's and other dementias. By 2050, that is projected to be one of every three dollars. This year, in 2017, Alzheimer's will cost the country two hundred and fifty-nine billion dollars, making it this country's most expensive disease. Now you may be wondering, what do I need from you? What can you do to make a difference? The answer is simple. I'm not here to ask for money. I'm here to ask you to share with your constituents that there is a free and very important service available to them. We at the Alzheimer's Association play a significant role in Colorado communities because we provide valuable education information on the disease and offer programs for the person with the diagnosis as well as their caregivers. We coordinate support groups throughout the state, and as I said, all of this is available to them at no charge. In addition, we offer training to the medical community and first responders such as police and fire departments on techniques for dealing with unique circumstances they encounter in delivering emergency services to persons with dementia. We've been very active in this region. Over the past eighteen months, we have provided training for El Paso and Teller County, for EMS staff and El Paso County nine-one-one personnel. And we also recently conducted training for Colorado Springs Public Defender's Office. We also welcome the opportunity to conduct training for more employee groups in the regions that have day-to-day interactions with members of the public. Those would be people in banks, retail, and food service. In the private sector, we work with professional caregivers and care communities. We want to provide training to ensure that our loved ones who have all forms of dementia get the kind of care that they need. And perhaps the most important message that I can impart is that the Alzheimer's Association has professional staff that works twenty-four seven on our toll-free helpline. That helpline provides assistance to all of the public that is concerned about whether they have memory issues. It's there for caregivers, it's there for the broader community, it's there for people that work in any care environment. And I brought cards with our helpline that I'm leaving in the back for reference. Recently, our regional central Colorado office added a new director named Mr. Jody Barker, who has had a long record of service to our senior community. He serves on Governor Hickenlooper's Colorado Commission on Aging. We're excited to have him with us. And locally, we're also very excited that we have Paula Levy that has been with us and supporting the Alzheimer's Association here in Woodland Park for seventeen years. Thank you Paula. And finally, I want to mention that we have a walk, the Walk to End Alzheimer's. It's September sixteenth in Colorado Springs at America the Beautiful Park. It is one of six hundred walks across the country that raises awareness and money for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. The walk unites each community in a display of strength and courage as we join together to defeat this devastating disease. Thank you so much for this opportunity to let me speak to you. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's a nice presentation, Council. Any questions for Charlotte? How many attendees did you have at last year's walk? I know it grows every year, it seems to.
Last year, we had over fifteen hundred. We're working towards two thousand.
Well, great event. We'll put the word out. We appreciate you being here and educating us a bit. We're all interested. I'm sure everybody in this room is touched by Alzheimer's one way or the other, and so anything that we can do, please let us know.
I'm here to answer questions. I'll be in the back. I brought information about the walk. I have registration forms if people want to register. Paula has a team called the Golden Bridge Network for Teller County, so if anyone wants to join her team, it supports her team and obviously the Alzheimer's Association. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay Suzanne, Suzanne, I'm sorry, we'll move on to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful.
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening, we have an appointment. We've received an application from Jody LaRue, and I'm sorry, I don't know if Jody's in the audience. If you are, Jody, can you put your hand up? She's not here. But currently, the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee has twelve members, eleven members with Jody, will be twelve. There's fifteen available slots on there, so she's put in an application, she would like to be considered for an appointment to the committee, and then if you choose her, I can swear her in another day. Excuse me.
Sounds good. Council, any questions? We don't have Ms. LaRue here. Is it LaRue? We have openings and we have a willing candidate. Question, then Kenny, why don't you make a motion? Thank you Suzanne.
Carr.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sonier.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to Vino and Oats, and I see Ben Caperton here. He has lots of swag also. Looks purple too, you did great.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ben Caperton, I live at eleven forty-three Winflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado, for a fantastic fifteen years, and I'm looking for about fifty more. So, I'm here to let y'all know that this August fifth is the tenth anniversary of Vino and Oats Wine, Food, and Jazz Festival. It will be taking place at Central Center and Highway twenty-four from noon until six on that date. We have, it's also benefiting Habitat for Humanity, Teller County, again this year. We have two great jazz bands, great food vendors, twenty-two incredible Colorado wineries, and over sixty-three vendors this year. So it's going to be huge, and we're expecting a crowd of around fifteen hundred. So if you haven't got your tickets yet out there, you ought to get your tickets quickly. So that's the gesture of the thing. We're looking forward to it. We've got support from the Police Department and the City of Woodland Park and Teller Waste and a whole lot of other folks that step in and help us yearly to make this thing a success, and we're looking forward to another successful year this year. So I am here to answer any other questions you have about Vino and Oats this year and pass out a few goodies.
What do you pass out? I don't know what questions we might have. Let me just say this.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Every year, your event grows, it gets bigger and better, more people from out of the community, more people from within the community, very well-run, everybody enjoys it, it couldn't be better, Ben.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate it.
Well, I enjoy doing this, as you know, I work for my wife.
We all, we all work for our wife.
And since I'm retired, I have a little time to do this, so. But if you'll bear with, yeah, so we're looking forward to seeing everybody out there that day. We're hoping for good weather, we'll get these afternoon thunderstorms out of the way, and we'll have a great event, so hopefully see everybody on August fifth. So if you would bear with me, if I can pass these things out, thank you.
What two bands are you bringing?
Sir?
You said two jazz bands.
We have Max Wagner, Max Wagner, and we have Tony Exum Jr., who will be having us dancing in the streets at the end of the day.
Thanks, Ben. Ben, thanks again. Thank you very, very much. Okay, Council, we'll move on. No additions, deletions, or corrections. Move on to the consent calendar, and Suzanne. I'm sorry, we'll do that. Barb Berger is here, but I misplaced her, there she is. Barb, come on up and tell us a little bit about Mueller State Park and Friends of Mueller.
Thank you for letting me talk to you about the Friends of Mueller. My name is Barbara Berger, I live at eleven seventy-five Karen Lane. We've lived here for almost fourteen years and just love it. And I brought Ken Shanica with me because he's kind of my partner in crime in all of this. And let me just go through just a couple of things very quickly. Mueller State Park celebrated their twenty-fifth anniversary last year. The park is five thousand acres with fifty miles of trails, over a hundred campsites, and you really have to book reservations because they fill up fast. People are shaking their heads because they know because they've tried. And one of the interesting things, and actually, the park manager corrected me, last year there were over two hundred and sixteen thousand visitors to the park. This is a significant economic impact to, I believe, Teller County, and I'll just leave it at that. I know the park manager said they have not done an economic impact study in several years. And from right here, from City Hall, it's only eleven miles. You need, if you haven't been there, you need to go there. The Friends of Mueller is a nonprofit group. We're trying to help the park as far as preserve the park, to, and in the wildlife, to encourage children with educational programs. Last year, the Friends of Mueller paid for fifteen buses that transported one thousand five hundred and forty children to the park. We're covering the cost of printing, like they're junior rangers. We purchase GPS units for them. And what's nice about the Friends of Mueller is that we have absolutely no paid staff. So any monies that we get all go back to the park. And what we're doing is that, thanks to Ken, we have an art show and sale next Saturday and Sunday. Friday night, there's a pre-show, and you're getting invitations, and we'll also put some more invitations out there and back. And I'm going to let Ken speak about this. So the artwork is all original, it's going to be reflecting the park, the animals, and with that, Ken.
Gentlemen, we all know our lot in life here. We push the cart, drive the car, and say yes, dear, and to my duties to help Barb get this arts together here. The Friends of Mueller are just wonderful, they're the people behind the scenes that get things done that you don't even know that are there, and they volunteer, they're invisible, but without them, you would really miss it. My job that I was drafted into, volunteered for, I don't know if there's much difference when you ask, when your wife asks you to do something, was to help them organize an art show. I live at four oh five Fairfield Lane, I'm sorry, the order of events here. Here in Woodland Park, my wife and I have lived up here for just about twenty years now. So my job was to organize an art show, and I know artists from all over the country, artists from some of the best in the world, and so I put together an art show, we invited and juried in artists. So we have internationally-known artists, Lee Cable is our featured artist, we've got artists from Montana, Idaho, Michigan, a lot of artists from all over Colorado and a number of local artists, plus we have one of our little local progenies, one of my teen students, Jared Brady, who won the Fifth Congressional District Art Show this year, and his painting is hanging in Washington DC right now. It will be for a year. The show is going to consist of original paintings, watercolor oils, and mixed media. All the artwork, all the artists had to do was make artwork that pertains to the art, that pertains to the park in some form, fashion, or manner. Friday night will be our pre-show patron party. You've got invitations, I hope you can find time to come out there for a couple hours, meet many of the artists that'll be there, and be the first ones to see the artwork. Write your checkbook. I'm not getting paid, I might as well ask for money. But take home some world-class art. The artists all understand this is the first year for this show, they've priced their artwork accordingly, much less than what galleries will be charging for their work. The artwork, it's starting to come in, I'm starting to collect artwork right now, it is outstanding, jaw-droppingly beautiful and priced right. So again, if you have any questions, you can contact Barbara or me, or show up with your little invitation on Friday and get in and see the artwork, come anytime Saturday and Sunday, and see the show.
Is this invitation good for one person or one carload?
One carload.
All right. You can bring our friends.
One carload.
Great.
That's, that's good for Friday night. Saturday and Sunday, the artwork, to see the artwork is free, you just got to pay the park admission at the gate. So it's, it's just normal. It's going to be absolutely jaw-droppingly beautiful, and the biggest and best event of its kind in the area. There's Victor celebrates the arts, there's the Mountain Arts Festival, there's other things. This is different. It's a, how do you say this without sounding, it's a notch above, I mean, these artists are better. And, not that the others are bad, no, no, there's levels of everything, okay? Levels of everything. Any questions that I can answer for you? I guess I talked enough.
Thanks very much, Ken. Barb, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Hope to see you all. And if you haven't been to Mueller, get up there. Thanks, Emily.
Okay Suzanne, I'll get back on schedule. Consent calendar.
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening, on tonight's consent calendar, we have the minutes from the July sixth regular council meeting, and then we have the statement of expenditures for June two thousand seventeen.
Council, questions? Not, we'll call for motion to approve the consent calendar. So move. Thank you. Thank you Suzanne.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes, on B, I was absent, so I'm standing on A.
Okay, thank you. Sonier.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, we'll move right ahead, no unfinished business, move on to ordinances on initial posting. We're going to consider ordinance number thirteen ten, and our city attorney, Erin Smith.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor and Council, ordinance thirteen ten is before you. It contains the franchise ordinance, which is a renewal of the franchise agreement between the city and TDS Broadband Service LLC. This franchise contains the same basic terms that the prior franchise contained, which was approved in two thousand, and by basic terms, I refer to the term of the franchise agreement, which is ten years, and the franchise fee, which is a three percent of revenues collected from subscribers. It also contains some updates with regard to technology, and there are some housekeeping cleanup provisions. This will be described for you in detail at your next meeting, at the public hearing, at which the applicant franchise broadband, excuse me, cable company will be here and will be present. So I would request that those technical questions be held until the cable operators here, and I am happy to take any process questions this evening.
Council, simply for initial posting, you have no questions? Call for motion to approve and set the public hearing for August third. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sonier.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you Suzanne. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings, and before we do so, I need to read this advisement. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be sure that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearings.
Mayor.
Sir.
On the next two agenda items, I need to recuse myself, since I voted on eighty-eight.
Appreciate it. We'll find somebody to, okay? Thank you. Suzanne, do you know where to stash Mr. Sawyer?
I'm sure I do.
Thank you Noel. Okay, we're in public hearing, and number eight A on your agenda, consider request for Mark Robeau and Sally Riley.
Thank you Mayor Levy, council members. This is the Woodland Park Microtel Project, and I would like to take both item eight A and eight B together since they are associated, and the request is by applicant Mark Robeau, Purple Mountain Hospitality Two LLC, to develop a sixty-two-room lodging facility on two point oh four acres at seven twenty-three West Highway twenty-four, and Mr. Robeau is here in the audience this evening, along with his project manager, Tom Cave. Prior to this meeting, the Planning Commission met and held a hearing regarding the overall plan changes to the Tammerack Center PUD, and approved the land use for the microtel and the final development plan and associated plans. Your role this evening deals with a very narrow component of the PUD, and that is to establish the dimensional standards. Those standards include the maximum building height, which is proposed at forty-five feet, the maximum site coverage at thirty-six point five percent, the minimum street frontage, which is a hundred and eighty-four feet, and the minimum setbacks of twenty-five feet front, rear, and eight feet on the sides, and I will explain those in more detail as we go through the presentation. The second aspect of your role tonight, which is eight B, has to do with the final plat. This project was preliminary platted in two thousand and twelve, and now they are bringing forward the final plat, which I will also explain in detail. First, we'll begin with the zoning map, and outlined in black is the subject property in a light purple, appropriate tonight for a PUD zoning. This zoning was approved September thirtieth nineteen ninety-three, when the Country Lodge was developed at that time. The original PUD, this portion of the property, was slated for an office building, two stories, thirty feet in height, forty-one parking spaces, and a detention pond. Now the applicant and property owner is asking for the microtel and associated improvements. The aerial of the subject property is outlined in yellow and labeled in red, and just to revisit, this is a fairly old aerial because it does not show the O'Reilly and the family tree center right now. It does show the Country Lodge to the south and to the west of the property. To the north of this property is still a vacant tract of land that is owned by Mr. Page, and then north of there is the Gold Hill South Shopping Center. And you can see Highway twenty-four, which is connected to Country Drive. This Country Drive that serves the Country Lodge and the new microtel is a private road. It does have a maintenance agreement and functions very well for this center. To the east of this property is the Hunts Edition. This was platted in the nineteen fifties, nineteen fifty-five. And so the other thing that is important on this map, which you can barely distinguish, which is the old Midland right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way, and so it's, it's actually traverses behind- And so, it's, it's, um, actually traverses behind City Market and comes right on the eastern side of this property. That railroad bed will be intact and preserved and the development will take place just west of it. And I'll show you some photos of that. So this is the site plan that shows the footprint of the motel, which it has about a ten thousand, slightly less than, ten thousand square foot footprint. To the west is Country Drive. They're proposing an access at this side. And then the parking will surround the project on the south and the east sides. And then there will be a one-way out, um, to expedite circulation around the building. The, um, railroad bed that I just spoke of is right in this area and then extends down to the south. So the three stories, forty-five foot height, and I'll show you some, uh, renderings of the building. The total square footage of the building is twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-one feet. There is seventy-one parking spaces, which is actually five more than the required number of parking spaces. So those extra parking spaces can be used for snow storage. Utilities have been designed so that the, um, storm water will be tying into a existing facility. They're also going to have an underground detention pond that will collect and convey the property, the storm water into that storm pipe. There will be a sanitary, or there is a sanitary sewer already existing on the south side of this building, of which they will be tying into. And then the water services will be coming in from the northwest. Mentioned the underground detention. That also will be a water quality facility so that it will allow for the storm water to permeate into the ground as well as release. Wanted to show you the schematic landscaping plan because, uh, sixty-three point five percent of this entire site, which is mostly the old railroad right of way and its tail, is going to be landscaped or open space. So they have a very good plan for landscaping around the building as well as around the parking areas. Here's the architectural renderings for this three-story building. And you can see that, um, it is going to have a peaked roof, which is part of the need for the extra height. Uh, it has articulated walls, a few gables, nice cultured stone. And this, this rendering shows it with the entire first floor done with cultured stone. However, uh, this is dependent upon the budget and how, uh, the costs come in for Mr. Ribault. If he's unable to do the entire first floor, he will have a wainscoting, uh, of stone all the way around the building as a minimum underneath the windows. And they, he will have hardy board plank, uh, siding. So this will be a very nicely designed and attractive building. Mentioned the preliminary plat that was done when Family Dollar and O'Reilly came to town. And you can see the microtel site. The final plat, I know you can't read this, but I just wanted to share that the first page of the final plat is always the text, the legal descriptions, the signatures, and notes and easements descriptions. These plats are drawn by the professional, um, surveyor and they are a very technical, uh, document that does get recorded once it's approved, uh, after this evening. I'm showing you the two lots that are included in this subdivision for Tammerack Center filing three. Lot one was the original, um, Country Inn at Tammerack Center. The reason it's part of this plat is because their common lot line is being adjusted ever so slightly to the south to allow for that additional, um, parking field for the microtel on this site. So staff has reviewed this and has just a few tweaks to this document, uh, should you approve it this evening. This is what the site used to look like. And in, um, May, the applicant came forward with a grading plan that was reviewed in accordance with our grading standards, the city's grading standards, and was issued administratively to begin to prepare the site. This is what it looks like now, um, after bringing in many thousands of cubic yards of structural fill. And this is looking toward the southeast. And you can see the Country Inn up above. The microtel will sit on this pad. At, um, three stories, it will not be taller than the existing hotel. So it will sit in there very nicely. This is the common property line between Bill Page's property, that's still vacant, and the new, um, hotel. You can see the extent of the fill that has already occurred there. This is the, uh, eastern side of the property. And when the Country Lodge was developed in ninety-three, a row of trees were planted along the railroad, uh, right of way. And that's what's here. They've had a couple of decades to grow. And then through the trees, you can see the Hunts Edition neighborhood that backs up there. So ample buffer has been supplied, uh, for the, uh, area between the commercial and the residential. This is another view, uh, toward the residential. You can see Mike's house here and, uh, Shady Lane down below. This is where the utilities all kind of loop around and tie into Shady Lane. And here's a view of Country Drive, the O'Reilly Store, and the access. I make note that a traffic study was done for this project and accepted by CDOT. They project about four hundred and fifty-eight average daily trips to the microtel. In compliance with the zoning regulations for the PUD eighteen point thirty, staff believes that the, um, bulk use and location of the principal building complies with a maximum height of forty-five feet. The dimensions of this building are approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet by sixty-six feet or ninety-five hundred square foot footprint. The building location is set twenty-five feet from Country Drive and then a hundred and twenty-two feet from the residential property boundary on Hunts Edition side. And, uh, the site coverage at thirty-six point five percent. The maximum site coverage includes the buildings and structures and all the impervious surface. So the parking lot, sidewalks, and that is a simple calculation of taking the total two acres and dividing the total square footage of impervious surface, thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three square feet into the total area. That gives us the thirty-six point five percent site coverage. And in a typical construction of a commercial project, usually they build up to seventy-five percent of the site as, uh, site coverage, uh, leaving twenty-five percent for open space or landscaping. The maximum height, forty-five feet. Typical, um, height for a, um, building, commercial building is thirty-five feet, but we do have several in town that are over the thirty-five feet in PUDs or variances from the Board of Adjustment where they make sense. The minimum frontage, uh, the, on Country Drive, although this is a private road, it is owned by the applicant. It does have, uh, acceptable easements across tracks A and B, as well as an easement that goes out to Highway twenty-four, um, which was a vacated portion of Lafayette. Uh, and this is, uh, typically a commercial frontage is forty to fifty feet. So this exceeds that. The building setbacks, we've recommended at our typical commercial setbacks of twenty-five feet front, twenty-five rear, and eight on the sides. So code compliance with, uh, the final plat. The information drawn by professional land surveyor, we've reviewed the criteria, it complies. With the purpose of a final plat, it's a well-designed two-lot subdivision, which is a little bit over four acres, including the existing lot one of Country Lodge. The site consideration, it is suitable for development, especially with the recent fill and grading. There are adequate services adjacent. And, uh, the ZDP and construction drawings will be under review for, um, final details on grading, erosion, drainage, utilities, landscaping, and lighting. Frontage again is adequate on the private drive. Easements are adequate, although we are requesting one of the easements in the front of the building needs to be expanded to be forty-five feet wide since it involves both the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. And a portion of the awning of the building and the retaining walls do project into that easement by the storm sewer. The applicant has agreed to take responsibility. Should anything ever happen to that storm drain, storm pipe, and repairs need to be made. It's a very unlikely kind of scenario, so it's a very small risk for the owner, but it's not a risk on the city's part. Uh, the lots are buildable, the new lot is buildable, and there are not any land use intensity ratios in, uh, commercial projects. However, tonight you're going to be setting the site coverage at thirty, thirty-six point five percent. Referrals were made to various groups. Uh, I would note that the Teller, uh, the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, there was a letter in your packet, they recommended disapproval, uh, on two accounts. One account is that, uh, this is a DDA, uh, TIF reimbursement project and they go on record for every TIF reimbursement. Uh, you understand there are issues with not receiving property taxes as a result of the DDA. And then secondly, they do not, uh, support a building that is greater than thirty-five feet primarily because it could affect their ISO rating. The insurance rating, it looks at a lot of different criteria. One of the criteria is how many buildings do you have that are over thirty-five feet tall within the district? We already have five or more. This would add one more. They do have a ladder truck that can service this. It deals with their ISO rating, which is why they go on record saying that this just adds another building to that criteria. Public notices were done in accordance to the code, the code. And so now, we, staff and the planning commission recommends that you approve the dimensional standards as reviewed earlier. I won't go through those again. And then also approve the final plat, uh, with a few, uh, tweaks to it. First, we need a subordination clause, uh, on the plat to expand that storm water and sewer line easement to forty-five feet. To add the detailed note that assigns the property owner the responsibility of the awning encroachment and the retaining wall into the easements. Add the word private to Country Drive. And then add the adjoining subdivision labels and lots for the, all the properties on the west and south side. So with that, um, I would be happy to answer any questions. And, um, we can go to questions or to the applicant.
Sounds good counsel, where do we start Ken? Just a quick question Sally, I know you deal with this on holidays, but, uh, how's the light exterior lighting handles, all down lighting as proposed in other commercial projects I assume?
Yes, fully shielded.
Go ahead Paul. Paul, when you hear the, uh, provisions made for the subdivision, are you, can I like, do you think it's a target? Packing, and, and those, these, these laws and things?
Yes, I can do that. Um, by just letting you know that, uh, there is a retaining wall on this side of the, um, property. And on top of that retaining wall, there's going to be a six-foot high fence. The retaining wall holds up the, um, holds, holds up the parking lot. And so, there's a significant buffer area between, it's about fifty feet from the retaining wall to the property line. And that the lighting is all fully shielded and downcast. So we believe, and the planning commission approved this already, that it, uh, meets the intent of the code and, uh, protects the, uh, neighborhood. And I do have the applicant, um, prepared a, oops, there it is, an exhibit that, um, shows kind of a, a cut view. This would be the level of the hotel. Here's the parking lot grade and then here are the homes. So the retaining wall will come up to just above the tops of their roof with the, uh, six-foot high fence. And the planning commission placed a condition on that fence, that it be maintained in excellent condition in perpetuity so that it doesn't get damaged or destroyed. And the applicant can add more to that if you'd like.
Tell me again, what kind of fence does that sound, is it?
It's, it's going to be a privacy fence, uh, wood, maybe. The applicant will look into others, other materials, but it will be a solid fence.
Yeah, so Mayor, thank you. Um, do we have any late additions to the, um, adjoining property owners' letters or any comments? Comments or?
Not with respect to the dimensional standards or the final plat. Uh, I did receive a letter that had to do with erosion that occurred when we had our big storm a week ago Wednesday. Uh, the applicant's, uh, contractor has cleaned that up and taken provisions to take care of that. But no, no letters as a result of the dimensional standards or the final plat.
Sally, so the request for the variation in height does not have to go to the Board of Adjustment?
No, because this is a PUD, the applicant can ask for something different, gives them the flexibility to request that.
And the ability to receive administrative approval for grading before the project begins because it's a PUD?
It's because... It's because any property owner who is interested in preparing land, in grading land speculatively, is able to do that if they have a viable plan that they're moving forward to.
I have a question that Erin can tell me if it's inappropriate to ask, but do you know what the DDA's TIF agreement is with the owner? What percentage of the TIF they will receive? And if there was any discussion of taking the percentage to provide to one of the first responder districts?
And I would say that that's not germane to your decision on dimensional standards or the subdivision plat. However, once you have closed this proceeding and you want to get that information, then that would be appropriate time to ask that question, thank you.
John?
Where are the five parking spots that would come to the space for sports?
The inlet to the detention facility is right about here. And so it's probably going to be these five, or could be some further out. That's up to the applicant to determine.
Any else here, counsel?
One more question, so the grading project that's already occurred basically eliminated the big hole that was opening?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Is a little, if I read you this correctly, part of the parking lot that's going to be?
Mr. Sonier, if you could scoot it to the mic so we get this on the record, please, sir.
Part of the parking lot that's going to be on each stair. The encroaches on the old railroad, is that correct?
That would be the southeast.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, it does, little, small part.
Obviously, there's all of it with that.
No more questions from counsel, we are in public comment now. I have one person that signed up for this agenda item, Carl Anderson. Would you like to speak on this? We'll bring the applicant.
I think the conditions that Mark is asking for is perfectly reasonable. I don't disagree with any of that.
Sorry, Carl, excuse me, just give us your name and address.
Carl Anderson, six oh two County Road five eleven. Thank you. Okay, I don't think what Mark is asking for is unreasonable at all here. I think it works perfectly. My concern, though, like Ms. Harvey brought up, is the impact on our emergency services and roads. And I think that needs to be taken seriously. I know the attorney said it doesn't count at this time, but I think it always counts. And I don't doubt Mark's ability to make this a successful project and be capable of, you know, providing that tax money. But it needs to be used appropriately and not burden the taxpayers with the services that are already being strained by other large projects that have gone on recently. So I'd just like that to be considered.
Thank you very much. Mark, would you like to come forward and say anything at all? We'd love to have you. And Tom, if you want to bring him with you.
Tom, you can join me up here if you don't? Pleased to be able to be in front of you and appreciate you listening or hearing our plans. I should start, my name's Mark Robo, I'm one eighty-nine Paradise Circle in Woodland Park. I've lived in Woodland Park now for about a little over five years. Well, we're planning on building the Microtel as part of the Wyndham Group, which is a, they have twenty different franchise or hotel brands in their system, and a great rewards program. I think it'll be, I think that rewards program will help bring tourism up into the area and get people to come up here to the Microtel. J.D. Powers has rated, Microtel is in the last, fourteen of the last fifteen years is the number-one economy brand hotel. And in many markets, it performs better than the mid-level hotels. Sixty-two rooms plus a fitness center. And I believe we've been kind of toying with this idea or doing an addition with the Country Lodge and really doing several feasibility studies and trying to understand what the market will bear. And I think we've come up with a good plan, a good build that'll complement the Country Lodge, but it'll also complement the Woodland Park community. That area between the Microtel and the residence, it would be a ready rock stone, which is a retaining stone. Discover Goodwill just used it in their parking lot, and it's an excellent, excellent product. And then on top of that stone, so the stone will be holding the parking lot in place. The neighbor's side, that wall from the ready rock will be about a three to four-foot-high wall. And then above that would be a six-foot fence, which would, which should block most of the noise. So we're proud of what we're planning, and I think it'll be a great asset to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, counsel staff, I'm Tom Cave, and I am the consultant to Mark Robo on this project. Couple of minor corrections I'd like to make in Sally's presentation. One is on the traffic count. The four hundred cars per day includes the Country Lodge that is already existing. So we're only going to be adding half of that to the traffic count, so that hopefully would minimize the concern that you have, Carl. The other question that was asked about the parking lot that goes out over the portion of the old railroad right away, that is, number one, we need the parking spaces. But number two, it also provides access to the existing utility easement in the event of any future access that's needed for repairs, maintenance, whatever on those utilities. On the trees that Sally mentioned, excellent comment, Sally, thank you very much. We put, we wanted to make sure we saved those trees for the benefit of the residential neighbors to the east of us. So we built a retaining wall in order to save those trees. So that's quite an expense and an effort that we've gone to to make sure that we can maintain their privacy. But I might mention that the design and construction of this project will take right at twelve months. We would certainly like to do it a lot sooner, but construction is what it is.
Carl can probably speak to that, right?
Yeah. The exit strategy for this hotel is to build, stabilize, and the long-term strategy is to operate this as a family facility. As Mark mentioned, Microtel brand is creeping upward in market segment. Currently, it is an economy brand, but it is also beginning to function as a mid-level type of facility. This will be sixty-two rooms, as Ben mentioned. We will have king, double queen, suites, economy brand, with forty-two-inch HDTV's, high-speed wireless with intermediate-scale fit and finishes. The amenities will include a fitness room, a flexible meeting, event space, not a big one, maybe for about eight or ten people maximum, a breakfast area, along with, and adequate parking for that. General market characteristics for this, to encourage you to vote yes. The Woodland Park market is a self-sustained market. It also relies on Colorado Springs for an economic impact. The market consists of a well-developed residential, retail, and commercial base. There is a regional medical facility, growing religious, educational presence in the market. Some smaller specialty industries are also located in the area. In the regional area, there is access to recreational venues, including Mueller State Park, right? But the economy relies on Colorado Springs. Of the approximate seventy-five hundred residents, about two-thirds of the workforce commutes to Colorado Springs for work and employment. I can personally attest to that, because every one of them were in front of me when I was coming up the pass this afternoon. However, another twenty-five hundred workers commute to Woodland Park each day. I guess that's kind of surprising to me. And the total workforce in the Woodland Park area is estimated at thirty-two hundred people. There is only one competitive hotel in the city, and that is the Country Lodge that Mark Robo also owns. This is a highly competitive sixty-room, mid-priced hotel with full-service amenities, including pool, restaurant, and lounge. The next closest competitive hotel is in Manitou Springs, fourteen miles away. Mark also looks to both hotels sort of being a companion to each other. There will not be a swimming pool on the Microtel, but they can always go up to the Country Lodge and take care and take advantage of those facilities. Due to the residential population in the city and the surrounding area, there's a potential for hotels in this market to gain some lodging demand from the distressed social interim housing and the relocation market segment. This hotel should be well-located to receive a portion of this demand. Lodging demand from this resource will be from more price-sensitive groups coming to the market. There will be social and leisure lodging demand. One of the stronger lodging demand generators for this market is visiting friends and families from out of state or from other parts of the state. Tourism, recreation, the tourism market is a source of lodging demand for this market area. And it is due in part to natural, historical, and cultural sites, venues located throughout the regional area. Little things like Pike's Peak, Pike National Forest, Florisum Fossil Beds, Mueller State Park, the Dome State Wildlife Area, and other potential lodging demand. So there's going to be a two-edged sword to this. The reservation system that Wyndham provides for this hotel will attract tourists to the area, because they'll be able to in advance get reservations, and they'll know they'll be able to stay here. So it will bring tourists into the area, but it would also take care of existing needs that are in the area. I might mention the Charis Bible College is also located here in Woodland Park with ninety-seven employees and about eight hundred students. The lodging demand from this resource includes administration, human resources, visiting speakers, six to eight conferences per year, three held in peak seasons ranging from six hundred to twenty-two hundred people. Campus days alone attracts eight hundred people. The timeline, as I mentioned, twelve months for completed design and construction. We have submitted construction documents to Sally for approval, and we have received our first round of comments, and they are in the process of being addressed. The foundation permit has been submitted to Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, and I have a copy for you this evening, Sally. And we should be able to have a foundation permit in about two or two and a half weeks. The architectural plans will be submitted around August first. So in this fast track, we will get started with utilities, foundation, fences, retaining walls. And then when the building department finishes, the review gives us a building permit, we'll be able to go vertical on that foundation. And this will allow for grant opening as soon as we can in 2018. So I request approval of the project so we can move it forward for everyone's benefit. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Tom. Counsel, any questions? Go ahead, Tom.
I go to the Country Lodge at least once a week, and this is a big topic for me. I noticed you have three accessible handicap spots. I really think that's not enough. I think five is probably more appropriate. Country Lodge handicap spots are always full. With our aging population and transit with vehicle traffic and vacations, I would request that you reconsider the three and try to bump that up.
Sally, tell us, just relative to code, I'm sure we're right up to code, three's the number?
ADA requirement is one space for every twenty-five parking spaces. So they have seventy-one parking spaces, so three is actually more than one.
Yeah, I understand.
I totally agree.
It's a code compliance, but it's really not a practical problem with the aging of our citizens. So it's more of a request than a...
So currently, I think we're showing four handicap spots, is that right, Sally?
There's three, three showing.
Okay, we could make that fourth one just to the right of the walking aisle. So that would not be an issue at all.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
And I will stand corrected on Sally's traffic count, sorry about that.
Would you anticipate, question, would you anticipate hiring any of the local labor force?
I'll allow Mark to address that.
All right, in the construction of the Microtel? Oh, for the construction part?
In the construction part, we do have a contractor out of Oklahoma City. And he will bring some of his staff with him, but he will have to rely on some subcontractors from the local area, Colorado Springs, or Woodland Park in order to complete the project. What that precise count is, I don't know, Ralph.
Tom, it always amazes me, we've got a workforce here that needs to work, and you guys are going to Oklahoma. Do they build Microtels? Is that why you're getting them? Do they have the lowest bid? Was there any consideration for our locals or anybody Colorado? Tell me all that process.
As a matter of fact, we had various discussions and two bids besides the project, the company out of Oklahoma City. Two of those companies walked away from the project because they didn't have staff to be able to address it.
It's good to know, good to know, thank you.
Yeah, the other company was from Colorado, was out of Denver. But their price did come in a little higher. The company that we are considering hiring, strongly considering hiring, has done three other Microtels. They specialize only in hotels, so they've done many other brands as well.
And you may or may not have done this, but we would love you to see, to encourage your contractor to use as many locals as possible in this regard.
And that's a given, Mayor, and I will make sure that we make that a point.
We would appreciate it. Anyone else? Mark and Tom, thanks very much. We will move forward, and we'll take these one at a time. If we can have a motion to consider...
Excuse me.
Sounds good. If anyone else would like to speak at this time? If not, we will close the public comment and move on to a motion to consider a request for item number eight A first.
I'd like to make the motion to approve item eight A after we have a public hearing, that I'd like to make a comment as part of the motion. We are considering this action based on some very specific criteria. Our decision, can't deviate from the criteria, whether we believe individually that the criteria has been met. The staff always does a terrific job in making that presentation, thank you very much, Sally. It's always good, and I like pictures. But I have some concerns, as with all the projects as we go forward, that fall within the DDA boundaries. This is a project unlike the Car Wash that we approved a few weeks ago, in that there are more souls involved in this, and that there is more potential than the need for first responders. Again, not part of the criteria that I want to go on record as saying that I hope the DDA is making that consideration, and that some percentage at some point in time is going to... is going to go back to those districts, those other taxi districts. Having said that, would you approve?
We have a motion in a second. Any other conversation? Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries six zero.
Thank you, before we move on to the next one, I'm amazed...
No, we have second motion.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Um, I'm amazed that Netco is not here. If it's that much concern to them, that just amazes me. I know what you're saying, Carl, we all care, we all want that to be right. So just a comment. Okay, we'll move on to consider public hearing, let's see, that's eight B. I don't exactly what to call that.
The final plot.
There you go. I've moved approval of eight B as presented for the final plot. Thank you, Ken.
Second.
You have a second? Suzanne?
Swenier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mark, Tom?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, we are very excited, certainly filling a need, not to mention the whole for our community. So, thank you very, very much.
Well, we have pictures in case you want to look at it in the future. And thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to item eight C, but I have a feeling it's going to be a lengthy discussion, and so we're going to take a break right now until twenty minutes after eight, about eight minutes, give everybody a quick break. Welcome back, everybody. We will move on to agenda item, number eight C, and I'm going to start with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to provide counsel with a legal overview, because counsel will be listening to presentations, comments, evidence, if you will, tonight, and I think it's important to have the legal framework for what you will be hearing. And by the legal framework, I mean the rules that your charter contains, and also the rules that apply through Colorado law for the criteria that you judge a rezoning application against. So, there are two rules that pertain to tonight's proceeding in the city charter. That is, that this is an upward-down decision by city council. Council is required under the charter to approve the rezoning or to deny it. Council does not have the ability like it has in some of the other proceedings that are charged to council to condition the approval. And that is contained in section fifteen point seven of the city charter. After the council holds a hearing, the council shall either zone the property as initiated or requested, acting by ordinance, or shall deny the initiated or requested zoning, setting out therein the reasons relied upon for such denial. And that gets me to the second requirement in the charter. A vote against the rezoning requires an explanation. Take that one step further. Your reason for voting no requires an explanation set out in the terms of the criteria by which you judge the application. So your no vote must be buttressed by or supported by your findings that the criteria have not been met, and the evidence that you heard that persuaded you that the criteria have not been met. I would ask counsel to turn to pages four, five, and six of the staff report. Thank you very much. Starting on page four, continuing on page five, and then ending on the... and continuing on page six, and then ending on the page seven, are the six legal criteria that counsel must use to form a framework for the comments and evidence you will hear. And if you are to vote in favor, then you have the benefit of the findings that are contained in the staff report. If you, as an individual council member, vote against, you will need to express your findings for which criteria have not been met, and which evidence supports that criteria not being met. Can I answer any questions on that?
I have one question for Suzanne, could you make us like three more copies of that stuff?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So counsel, everyone understands, if you're going to vote no at the end of the discussion, then it'll have to be relative to the criteria, and in your mind, what criteria has not been met? And we'll have that discussion after the public comment.
And it's important during your deliberation process to explain the... and have a robust discussion among yourselves as to which criteria you believe have been met, and which may not have been met, and the evidence that supports either. That concludes my comments on the rules contained in the charter and the law with regard to how you hold your proceeding tonight and the criteria by which you judge the application. I also want to take up a discussion on ex parte communications. There have been a number of emails forwarded to the mayor and to the members of council, and those emails and any other conversations that council has engaged with with any person about this rezoning application are conversations outside of this hearing. So those are called, under the law, ex parte communications. Council is always encouraged not to engage in ex parte communications, and so the proper response to receiving those emails is to forward those directly to the city attorney or the city clerk, and then those emails become part of the council packet, part of the record for this evening's hearing. Same if council is stopped, or if someone calls the council on the telephone, or you're stopped at the grocery store, or you receive just another email that's not addressed to the entire council. The response then should be, I cannot discuss this matter. Doing so may cause me to have to recuse myself. Please come to the hearing and make your comments as part of the public record. I will say that the law in Colorado makes it very clear that the ex parte communications are not a fatal flaw to the process as long as they are disclosed as part of the public hearing. So at this point, I am going to ask each individual council member whether or not you have had any conversation about this application outside of tonight's hearing, and I will then begin with Mayor Levy and ask Mayor Levy, have you had any conversations about this application outside of this hearing?
I have not.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Protem?
I have not.
Councilman Carr?
No, but we received all kinds of emails through city staff. Communication applies two ways, so absolutely not.
Thank you, and those various emails, we are going to... Those have been identified, they have been forwarded to Ms. Riley, and they are a part of this hearing record tonight. Councilman Matthews, may I ask the same question?
I have not.
Councilman Sanye, may I ask the same question?
No.
Thank you. And Councilman Sawyer?
The applicant is my neighbor, will we get a copy of that?
Okay, and I do need to just follow up with a further question, Councilman Sawyer. Is the fact that the applicant is your neighbor, does that cause you to have any bias or be unable to make a decision tonight based on the information you received tonight?
It does not.
Thank you. And Councilman Schaefer, I would ask you the same question with regard to the ex parte communications.
I received an email from a citizen, and I had the discussion with Sally and forwarded a copy of that to you and to Suzanne.
Thank you, and that's completely appropriate, and I do appreciate that. With that, Mayor and counsel, do you have any further questions for me before we get into the comment presentations?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the process will be pretty simple. We'll start with Sally, and she will tell us all about this. We will have a discussion, then we'll open the floor for public comment. We'll talk about that a little bit prior to that time, and then we'll come back to counsel for a decision. So, Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Levy, council members. This is the Aspindel rezoning. It's ordinance thirteen oh nine, refers to a ten-acre parcel that's currently zoned suburban residential, or SR, and request the applicant, Mr. Steve Randolph, who is here in the audience this evening and will present his case. He is requesting a change to urban residential. As part of this process, we were... I was invited to a neighborhood meeting that occurred on June sixth, and then a planning commission hearing happened two days later on June eighth. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of this with a five-three vote. Then the first reading of ordinance thirteen oh nine took place on July sixth, and here we are this evening for the public hearing. I'd like to begin with an old USGS map to show you the proximity of the subject parcel, which is shown in yellow here with it relating to Highway sixty-seven and Highway twenty-four in the downtown area of Woodland Park. Also wanted to point out that the heavily shaded area here was at one time Forest Service property. It was known as the Spielman Tract, and I'm going to use that term later in the presentation, so I wanted you to see that. It was, now is... It was, now is part of the Stone Ridge development and was traded back, or was traded for property to a private developer, so that's why the Spielman Tract is now developed and Stone Ridge. Showing another aerial, a little bit closer in to give you the context of this ten-acre tract that is outlined in yellow. We have the Northwoods subdivision to the west and also to the south, the Stone Ridge Village subdivision, which is a planned unit development, a PUD, to the east and to the north. Stone Ridge, PUD, was a total of two hundred acres as part of that Spielman Tract, and it is slated to be developed with a mixed-use, commercial along the highway, and then residential inward, and it has programmed three hundred and sixty units, or residential units, for Stone Ridge on the entire two hundred acres. You can also see Meadowwood Park and its proximity, Evergreen Heights Drive, which a hundred and thirty houses in Northwoods all enter, out, and exit into their neighborhood from Evergreen Heights Drive, and then the fire station, which is on Evergreen Heights Drive. So this property is well-located as what I'll refer to as an infill project. Little bit closer aerial for the ten acres, which shows the Northwoods properties, Michael Lane, that surround the south and the west. To the north is Snowshoe Court, and to the east is Tarmigan Drive, and then Stone Ridge Drive, which connects out to Highway sixty-seven and Kelly's Road. Also want to point out on the aerial that there are two tracts that are already dedicated for access to this property, the first being in the nineteen eighties when Michael Lane was platted. This little Outlot A was purposely deeded to the city for the purpose of a future road or access point to this ten acres. And then in two thousand and five, when Stone, the first phase, first filing of Stone Ridge Village was platted, Cobalt Place was also included as a access point to the ten-acre property and deeded to the city. It is right now unimproved, but it would be improved as part of the development of this property in the future. Now the zoning map. So you can see the Northwoods subdivision is colored in a pale yellow, as well as the subject property, so that's the suburban residential zone classification. And then surrounding this area is the two-hundred-acre Stone Ridge Village, PUD, planned unit development. You can also see that there are other zones in the neighborhood. Meadowwood Park is zoned public semi-public. The Evergreen Heights, PUD, is near Meadowwood Park. The fire station is zoned public semi-public. And then you have the campground, Diamond Campground, a church, place of worship, and then here is Kelly's Road and the intersection of Highway sixty-seven with Stone Ridge Drive. Also wanted to point out that just kind of diagonally from this area, the bright yellow, that is urban residential zone. So, south of County Road, all the way here to City Hall, is zoned urban residential. And then there is a project that occurred maybe about eight years ago. That was the Stewart Place Development, and it requested a zone of urban residential and has developed with Karen Lane and Craig Hoare. So that is an example of a subdivision that has been built under the urban residential zone. All their lots are at least fifteen thousand square feet or more. Now I'd like to show you some photographs of the subject property. This is looking toward the east. You can see Rampart Range in the eastern horizon here, and a portion of the parcel that is grassland, ponderosa pines, aspens. There is a drainage facility that comes into the corner here, and on this slide, on the upper left, or upper right, you can see that drainage swale, and then it, the stormwater fans out in this area and then gets recollected into Stone Ridge, into a swale, and into an existing detention facility in Stone Ridge Village that has been designed to be able to accommodate the future development of Aspindel. More photos of this area. This is the northern boundary line with homes adjacent to Stone Ridge. These are on Snowshoe Court. Then, this is looking toward the southwest. Here's Gold Hill, and you can see these are the homes in Northwoods that abut the southern property boundary of Aspindel, and this is its wide-open grassland area. It was originally zoned A1, and I'll go through the history here in a moment. This is, I turned around and looked now toward the northwest, which shows that Aspen Grove that's in the northern half of this property. So you can see the type of terrain. It's fairly level, not hilly, and has very buildable property. This is a photo of Outlot A that shows the end of Michael Drive that has the original access to this property from the nineteen eighties. And here is a photo of the intersection of Cobalt Point and Tarmigan Drive, which is unimproved, and the homes on either side in Stone Ridge Village. So what's the difference between a suburban residential and urban residential density? Is primarily the difference and lot size? The current zone, suburban residential, is one dwelling unit per gross acre with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. In urban residential, builders can put up to two units per gross acre, and those lot sizes can vary all over, but cannot be less than seventy-five hundred square feet. The dimensional standards for the SR and the UR zone are exactly the same. Heights are measured at thirty feet at mean grade. The setbacks are twenty-five feet front and rear, and eight on the sides. The frontage is forty feet for each lot on a road, and parking is required to have two off-street spaces for each home. And then each home, the footprint cannot exceed more than sixty percent of the site, so forty percent of the site must stay as open. In your packet was the topography survey that was done quite a few years ago by the property owner, and it has been helpful in understanding the drainage and the stormwater runoff from this property. And a drainage report was included in your packet that was done when Stone Ridge Village was being developed in order to accommodate for an increased detention facility that Skip House and Dana Duncan developed in Stone Ridge. So now we're going to start through the criteria for what we need to evaluate when looking at a request by a property owner. And the background in the staff report, and Mr. Randolph will be able to give you a personal history of his ownership of this property when he comes up, but first of all, we look at the comprehensive plan map. And currently, our comp plan map shows this area as residential, so it is still going to be single-family residential, so it is consistent with the comp plan map. Then we look at the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, and many of you do have copies, whoops, copies of the comp plan. And they, they have many chapters in here that you can find something for everyone in the vision, the aspirational vision for the community. So I have selected three goals and objectives that apply to this request. The first one is the land use goal, to provide opportunities for growth and development while preserving community and environmental quality. Staff believes that by going to an urban residential zone, it reduces sprawl, urban sprawl, and provides more efficient use of infrastructure. It also has the capability of preserving open space and natural features of the site. It's afforded the potential of smaller lots so that you can maintain those key areas, drainage areas, environmental areas, the Aspen Grove, to preserve that environmental quality. So it is consistent with goal number one of land use. Housing goal number one is to provide a balanced and diverse housing supply that is well-designed, well-maintained, and available and accessible to all citizens throughout the entire community. A more balanced and diverse supply of housing can be provided with the urban residential zone. With greater density, then you can have a greater supply of housing. The possibility of roadway connections could also be of benefit. This is not a requirement, but it is something that could be considered with this property. The economic development objective is to increase the desirability of Woodland Park as a place to live, work, and provide diverse housing options, expanded educational opportunities, and additional community amenities. By allowing for a higher density on this ten-acre tract, we can provide for more housing options to future residents in Woodland Park as an infill development. And more units will contribute to the tax base. So what has changed in the surrounding properties that warrant a zoning classification change? First of all, in the nineteen eighties, when Northwoods subdivision was developed, the minimum lot size was fifteen thousand square feet, and that equates to two-point-nine units per gross acre, if you just do a straight calculation. The area, as I mentioned, around the north and the east side was known as the Spielman Tract. And then in nineteen ninety-seven, the city overhauled our entire zoning regulations. And it was at that time that the Northwoods subdivision was zoned suburban residential. And it was primarily because they had a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. Then, in, and Stone Ridge was vacant, and outside the city limits. So Stone Ridge was annexed in two thousand and four. And this property was annexed, the Aspindel property was annexed in nineteen eighty-one. So just as Northwoods was coming in, being developed and coming into the city, this property, Aspindel, was zoned A1. But in ninety-seven, it was zoned suburban residential. Stone Ridge, when it began to develop, the PUD allows for two units per gross acre, the same as urban residential. And filing rule one was platted with an average lot size of eighteen thousand two hundred square feet. That immediately abuts that property line. I did a further analysis to try to equate apples to apples. So I looked at the ten-acre site and then created a ten-acre parcel just to the south to analyze a variety of seven different ten-acre tracts around this parcel. And so just to walk around to the south, the ten acres in Northwoods has the equivalent of twenty lots. The ten acres to the southeast is part of Stone Ridge Village. It has an equivalent within that ten acres, twenty-five lots, and one-point-four acres of roadway. To the due east of this tract, there are twenty-seven lots in a ten-acre parcel with one-point-six acres of road right-of-way. To the north, there is twenty lots and two acres of road right-of-way, primarily because it has all these intersections of roads. And then the future development of Stone Ridge, we took another tract of ten acres. It too will be twenty units, very similar to an urban residential, not ten units, but twenty. And then to the due west area, there are twenty-two lots in a ten-acre area. And another section of Northwoods shows twenty lots in a twenty-acre. So we based our support of the Aspindel urban residential zone on the surrounding properties being similar to this request and compatible. So therefore, the density of one unit per gross acre, as it currently stands as suburban residential, is dissimilar to the surrounding densities in their parcel sizes. The SR zone would create more urban sprawl. The UR zone with two dwelling units per acre is more compatible, may be developed in a more compact method or lots, which reduces the infrastructure needs and would avoid urban sprawl. A perfect infill project. So, describe the appropriateness of the urban residential zone at this location. It promotes public safety, health, and general welfare as considered as an infill tract between two developed subdivisions. It uses existing infrastructure surrounding the parcel so that it is a more efficient use of infrastructure with urban density, urban residential density. It's in good proximity to city parks, schools, churches, emergency services, and transportation corridors. It's a very developable parcel due to the parcel's terrain, access, and proximity to services. It provides- It provides for an orderly progression of development and reduces urban sprawl. The little exhibit here showing the existing parcel, these are the water lines that surround this property. And what is our ability to serve this tract with 10 additional units to upzone? We have studied our build-out scenario in Woodland Park because we do have a finite amount of water. And so we have been tracking over 15 years the number of vacant lots and how our land has been platted and utilized. And currently, we're forecasting about 13,000 people. Our water currently, at its developable rate, can support 12,600 people. But there are many factors that go into that. If the next census shows that we have fewer people per household, that's going to extend our water supply. If we continue to be good stewards of our water, we will be able to extend our water supply. And we have been looking in a crystal ball as to how properties are going to develop. And so there are many factors. Our best estimate goes into this vacant lot study. So adding 10 units does not concern us so much. We have the water today to be able to provide for an additional 10 units. And so on the short term, we can support this. On the long term, it is, I'll be honest, difficult to predict how the city's resources will work out. But on every plat, and even in this ordinance, 1309, there is a qualifier that says that there is not a guarantee for water taps if the community grows out in a way that we're unable to support. But right now, on the short term, we have the water to support urban residential zoning. And what is our ability to serve with wastewater treatment capacity? Right now, our treatment plant is under construction and expansion that will provide for a service population of 14,010. So the wastewater capacity to serve is available now and will be available in the future. And this little exhibit shows the current sewer lines that are in proximity to the subject property. So what's the next step? When a property owner zones their property and then they are interested in developing, they will be required to meet all the city's development standards that apply to the subdivision at that time. And the first step is a preliminary plat. It's perhaps the most important step of all because the land, the lots are laid out, the roads are laid out, it's evaluated for utilities, they're laid out, drainage is all considered. And the city has very good subdivision standards, which are represented in the surrounding neighborhoods. The Stone Ridge development was developed under our current city standards. Then a final plat comes along, and you approved a final plat tonight for the new subdivision. That's when it gets recorded and they're able to sell lots. Each single-family home is then reviewed. And that site plan review looks very carefully at setbacks, heights, driveways, drainage, and how that home fits within the context of the subdivision. And so the future development plans, although we can't predict tonight exactly how this subdivision will be laid out, nor is the developer required to have a proposed subdivision with a rezoning, that it will all come in the future and there will be public hearings and there will be an opportunity for neighbors and folks to be able to review these preliminary plats and final plats. So with that, the planning commission recommends approval of the zoning change, ordinance number 1309, from suburban residential to urban residential for the Aspandale tract. Be happy to answer questions, or you can, I'll introduce the owner.
Let's do both. Let's introduce the owner and have him come up and answer questions if necessary. Mr. Randolph, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Steve Randolph, 1211 Mountain Meadows Drive. Owner, applicant, here to answer any questions.
Who'd like to start for us? Kim?
Well, I've got a question. I'm not sure if it really should go to Steve as much, Sally, or maybe to both of you. Regarding the water issue, if it is developed, as we are showing here, I know we're talking in the future a long way. I just wonder, if somebody, if they want to buy a lot there, but they have, can they buy the water tap now and not build for 10 years? I mean, they're at risk of buying land that they can't build. That's what my question really revolves around.
The answer's no. You can't purchase a tap without a viable project.
So it has to be built fairly soon after they buy?
Yeah, you have a 12-month window to, when you purchase that tap to build that residence.
And that applies to all properties in town, not just this one?
Correct.
And currently, we're at about 60% buildout, so there's another 40% in the future that we have water supply for.
And in your statistics, I know there's been a lot of changes over the years with lots in town, some of which have been combined, so they've reduced the number of lots. Do you have any numbers on that, that, you know, we had like X number announced, we have, you know, expanded our population because so many of the lots have been combined? Do you have any numbers on that at all?
I don't off the top of my head. We do lot line vacations fairly regularly, probably about 10 a year.
So that increases the amount of taps we can do then?
That reduces the number of lots that are in the vacant lot study.
So we've got two things working there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Sally showed two potential entry and exit locations on the parcel, one of which was the little Lot A in the northwest corner, the other was midway down the development on the eastern side. Have you given any serious thought to entry and egress roads or infrastructure?
I have, yeah. That's been a topic of a lot of contemplation for 15 years. The property, when I happened across it, a former city manager had apparently made a commitment to the Northwoods neighborhood that Michael Lane would not extend, as it had originally been designed, to connect with 67, which would go through what's now Stone Ridge. So that was my understanding at the time, that Michael Lane could not be extended. It could be used to enter this property, but it couldn't be extended in a way that connected to Highway 67. So that's been my understanding the entire time. Now, today, I can't tell you what the city might or might not approve if I were to ask to connect it through the property, which would bring you out to 67 on, at Stone Ridge. And I have no firm plans at the moment to do it one way or another. What it does do is offer a possibility to access one portion of the property one way and the other, another portion the other way, and not connect them together at all. So, but I don't have a plat, preliminary plat, to show you tonight.
All right. Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Sally, while they're thinking, I've got a question for you. Planning voted five to three in favor. Can you give us a sense of what the three that voted against, what their concerns were relative to the criteria?
One of the planning commissioners seemed to be concerned about the future of the water supply of Woodland Park. The other two did not give us a very strong indication why they voted against it.
Thank you.
Well, when we're talking water supply, we're talking 20, 30 years from now, right? We're not talking five years from now. So, I mean, things will change. We do have things in progress right now to increase our water supply. Is that correct?
Yes and no. We're not developing any local water, but we are always looking for opportunities to purchase augmentation water.
Okay. So it's not a, to me, this isn't a deal breaker. I have more of a statement than a question. I do look at this, and I think it would be wiser to have half-acre lots surrounded by half-acre lots than one-acre lots. If I was a buyer, I wouldn't be buying a one-acre lot surrounded by half-acre lots. And this, it just wouldn't make sense. So, and the fact you're surrounded by URs would make it more logical to have this part of UR also. So I just, as a buyer or a developer, I see this to keep it consistent with the surrounding lots.
Kim, let me go back to you relative to water. What are your concerns, if any, and is that something that should concern us?
Anytime you do a density increase, you're just putting more stress on a system. But, you know, the way we have it planned, it's just the way the city will develop. It's hard to predict if those planned uses will come to fruition. So that's the hard part. In my memo, I say we can support it on the short term, on the long term, it depends on how things develop. You know, 50, 100, 150 years from now, there might be a more difficult decision in front of us. And as we developed with technology, low-flow fixtures, the average use per person has decreased. I do like a five-year running average of total raw water, and that's decreased about two and a half gallons over the last five years, so, per person. But we see that on the wastewater side, so it's, from a water standpoint, it's just, it's tough. We're limited right now, and water is getting more expensive.
Great, thank you. Paul?
How far out do you see yourself coming up with a plan for this 10-acre piece of land as far as subdividing it, roads, access, egresses, ingresses, whatever, you know, needs to consider would develop in this piece of land?
I would start the preliminary plat sketch process fairly soon. Start and work through the winter on that and probably have something more formally to bring to the planning department next spring. It might not be for the whole 10 acres. It might be, if I use the two different access points, it might be for one access point, but not both. So I could do two different phases, let's say, two different filings for the lots. But I don't plan to sit on it for years and years and years. I've already done that. The county likes it when you do that because you pay a lot of property taxes and you get nothing in return for it. But it's a point now where the market for this kind of property is returning, and that's what prompts me to go ahead and start to subdivide the property now.
And why would you do it in two plots? If the demand is there, why wouldn't you just plot it out and show how you're going to enter and egress the property?
Could do it. Could do it several different ways. I had done a, have we lost the sound here?
No, we're, there's just a lot of background and we're not sure what it is and we're, you know, trying to adjust it.
Okay. How are we doing? Should I just talk louder?
No, I think that's fine now.
Okay. I had put together a subdivision a few years ago called Spruce Ridge, and I did that in two different filings. And that just happened to work out very well because of the way the property, the terrain worked out, the access to utilities and right-of-way, just worked out to do it in two different filings. This is a little bit similar, but not the same, so it's just an option I would reserve for myself until I get ready to actually put that in writing to the planning department.
If he does it in two plots, and a question to you, if he does it in two plots, could he come back and request rezoning of the next plot? Could he go with higher-density homes?
The next highest density would be a multi-family level, and SAF would not support multi-family.
Okay. So there could be no multi-families, low-income, any other type of homes put on here except single families on half-acre lots?
The urban residential zone is single-family. It's not necessarily going to be all half-acre lots. It divides out equally in half-acre lots, but it can vary those lot sizes.
I can give you the benefit of my thought process, which is to basically replicate in this 10 acres what you saw in that graphic on page six of the various 10-acre parcels that surround the property. I have no reason to do this any differently than those have already been done. Because I think the character of the neighborhood is important to, in terms of value to the buyer. They need to see, as I think Noel pointed out, why would you buy a half-acre lot, or a one-acre lot surrounded by half-acre lots? So that's kind of a fundamental economic decision to make.
Would you have a homeowners association, standards for construction materials and things of that nature?
I will have covenants, but I won't set up a homeowners association.
Covenants.
But also, Paul, I just need to remind us that our questions have to pertain to the six criteria. Those are good questions, but...
Well, you know, I've just seen the six criterias and all of that. Yeah, I hadn't exactly burnt them into my head, and I'm trying to get through this process and try to get an understanding just by asking questions. Obviously, this is a lot to absorb right here, right now, and I appreciate your input, and I'll be considerate of that, yes, most definitely. But I'm going to listen to what the public has to say.
Go ahead, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sally, I don't see green space, park space allocation on any of this documentation. Is that going to be part of the next step?
It is. In the review of a new subdivision, the applicant, if they want to preserve a park, the park dedication requirement is .064 acres per unit. So if this were a 20-acre, a 20-unit subdivision, a half-acre park is what would be dedicated. However, the city is not really interested in having small pocket parks. But if an open space makes sense, we negotiate that with the developer and look at the surrounding area and see if that is the best approach and the most optimum use of the land.
Answer your question, Phil. Thank you. Anybody else, before we go to public comment, we'll come back. Okay. Steve, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We may call you back, but I'm sure you'll be around. Okay, we're going to open the public comment for this now and make a... Okay, we're going to open the public comment for this now and make a few outline for everybody that feels like they want to come and speak. First and foremost, we've all received a number of emails and haven't communicated back because we're not allowed to in this kind of quasi-judicial decision. This is the first time that we've seen this information as a group. So, no decision has been made prior to this, even though some of you think that that's been the case. The only decision that was made was from planning to bring it to council. We are very interested in hearing from everybody. I'm not interested in hearing from everybody the same exact thing. And so, when you come to the podium, I will give you some time, but if you're repeating what the guy before you said, or whatever, we just...and everybody's...everyone's got issues with time. So, let's respect time, but we want to make the right decision. We're not going to be able to do that without everybody giving us their input. The timeframe will kind of be up to me. I don't think I'm going to allow more than five minutes because I think you can get it done in less than that. But we're going to start with the presentation, and perhaps that might answer a lot of questions for people. Other than that, council, preface anything else relative to this public comment? If not, we're going to move forward with the public comment and start with Larry Larson. Excuse me, Larry. Before you start, make one other note. We're not going to have discussion with people that come to the podium. State your case, and then we'll just ask you to sit. Then we'll discuss afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayor of the city council staff. A couple of things I would like to start out, just as a matter of disclaimer. I am a member of your Board of Adjustment, and I do real estate real. I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I just wanted to let you know that I am a member of the board. Second of all, I wanted to let you know that I used to be Sally Riley, the planning director for the city between 1987 to 1994, and in no way does that influence my opinion of what I'm representing tonight. I'm going to give you a counter staff report, if you will, on this particular project. And I'd like to thank Sally. She's been very helpful in providing me with guidance and information on preparing our neighborhood, on how to address this. And I'm also going to ask the mayor for a little forgiveness on the five-minute time. I'm going to be able to provide you with the criteria to deny this particular request. And has that information been standing up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you have that in front of you, and you can certainly use that as the UC file.
Larry, you take your time. We'll give you as much time as needed. You're probably at least one of the most educated on this, so we're anxious to hear from you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Again, Larry Larson, 1320 Michael Lane. And I serve as a representative for the Stone Ridge and the neighborhood subdivisions. We've had two neighborhood meetings, myself and another neighbor, Larry Watts, was designated by the group to be the representative to provide this information to you. So, that's the role I play in tonight. We're going to ask you to recommend denial of this application. Why? It does not meet the zoning criteria that you need to look at when you review a zone change. And that criteria is, as you may or may not know, is not codified in the code. It does not tell the specific criteria what you need to consider. But through common practice throughout the years, maybe even prior to 1987, in fact, that there are certain standards that the city has adopted and looked at for zone changes, and those things are just accepted for a zone change. So, we're going to ask you to deny this because it doesn't meet the criteria. It doesn't meet the neighborhood's longtime expectations. I've lived in the Northwoods subdivision for 30 years, and I've known what was going to happen behind my property. It was going to develop residential. When I first moved there, it was Zone A1, and then in 1997, it was Zone Suburban Residential, something that I embraced and I thought was a wonderful idea and met my ideals of what I think my big backyard should be. Steve? And second of all, we had two neighborhood meetings. We talked about significant concerns. Many of those things will move through the processes, will reduce the plats, traffic, drainage, cut through traffic, so on and so forth. We'll have an opportunity to do that regardless of if it's 10 or 20 lots. In your packet, you received over 23 letters from our neighbors expressing their concerns on this particular development, as well as a petition saying that we're opposed, and there were 73 signatures on there. And we respectfully disagree with the staff's analysis in the staff report. Good job, but not quite there. I've always wanted to say that. Our primary concern is not the use of single-family dwellings are appropriate, but is the proposed density and the minimal lot size are not in character with our neighborhood and area. First staff report denying that additional 10 units does not promote urban sprawl. When you look at urban sprawl, you've got to look at the community as a whole. That's going to be less than 1% of what we're capable of developing in the future. So, just not having 10 additional lots does not create that. And again, thanks to the city attorney, Ms. Smith, bringing this up. We believe that the request should be denied because it does not comply with the following zoning criteria. You have that information provided for you in front of you. I want to go through that very quickly if I can. It's not consistent. Well, let's start out by saying, well, glad it is. It is consistent with the zoning map or the comprehensive plan for the city. This area is designated for residential, and in the comprehensive plan, which I was had an opportunity to help create when I was a member of the planning commission with Councilman Harvey, we created the comprehensive plan for the city, and we created the map, and we thought this area should be designated for residential, and that's what the city accepted. And certainly, it does fit that category. It does meet several of the criteria, and Sally is 100% right. We can pick and choose various criteria that we can look at on how to justify our analysis and our opinions. First one is it doesn't comply with Land Use and Growth Objective 1.1, which basically says that all new development should respect individual property rights. And we're talking about the existing neighbors on all four sides of our...of this property, and preserving the residential and commercial real estate property values. We think that that's very important, and that needs to be protected through the plan. And it upholds our neighborhood integrity. This area has been zoned suburban residential since 1997. The Stone Ridge development occurred and used PUD standards that were very similar to our suburban residential. So, again, we don't think this development will meet that criteria. And also, it's not consistent with Land Use and Growth Action 1.1.8. Again, respecting the property rights of impacted property owners. And we're definitely in the impacted property area. Number two, that it doesn't maintain the overall integrity and the character of Woodland Park neighborhoods. We believe our neighborhood is suburban residential, not urban residential. Number three, the areas are significantly harmonious with the adjacent land uses to preserve and protect the property values of those properties in the same and adjacent zones. And again, we think that we are more of a suburban residential than we are urban. And again, it's not consistency with Land Use and Growth Action 1.1.9, Encourage Quality Infill Development. Is it consistent with the surrounding neighborhood character? Again, no. We are suburban residential. What has changed? Sally gave a great overview, and certainly I was involved when the Spillman Track moved from Forests property, was annexed into the city. I was very much part of that process. But we have to look at the point of 1997 as the point of beginning. When we started on the same foot, was a major overhaul, the zoning went in effect, when this particular track, as well as the Northwoods area, was zoned suburban residential. In fact, we believe that the surrounding area still is. The Stone Ridge development was zoned PUD using similar standards. Being developed, and we believe that this particular development should be developed using the ARs, suburban residential standards, not the urban. And that's basically setbacks, building height, all the same for those two districts, but the major difference in the teams to two is the density requirement, which doubles the density in an urban residential zone district, and it decreases the minimal lot size to 7,500 square feet as opposed to the one-third acre of 15,000. No significant changes have occurred in the area. We still have the services available. We're still close to the fire department. We're still close to the... Again, it's the UR, Urban Residential District, is not appropriate for this property. This surrounding area is clearly suburban. I would assume that I hope that most of you had a chance to go to our neighborhood, look at the neighborhood. It is suburban. My daughter works, lives in Brooklyn, New York. That's urban. There's a difference between Woodland Park, suburban, and Brooklyn, urban. I'm not asking you to make those comparisons. I'm just being a little facetious on that. But what I want you to know is that this is not an urban area in our community. The urban area for residential should be close to the downtown area. And again, this parcel is completely surrounded by the suburban residential and the PUDs. The Northwoods and surrounding portion has been...has been developed and being developed using those standards. We ask that this parcel utilize those same standards as well. Again, the urban district has been utilized in our community in the historical areas in the north and south of the downtown area, and there's only a few exceptions, and Sally pointed those out. One of those is over a half-mile away, but most of it's in the downtown area. Let's don't spread the urban residential district into the suburban areas of our community. And lastly, we think this could possibly be a spot zoning. Spot zoning occurs when zoning applies to and benefits a single parcel or a landowner and is not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or the surrounding zone. Again, we don't believe it's consistent with the suburban residential zoning in the area. Availability of water resources. We know, and we've talked about it for many, many years, that our water resources are finite. We only have so much water available to us. We can go out on the market and try to purchase more, as Kip just said. That's pretty hard to do with this very competitive market out there to do that. So, we, as a community, have come together and said, we're going to only become a community of 12,600 people because of our water constraints right now. It's not so much the short-term use of water. We have enough water to satisfy the need for this particular project, whether it's 10 units or 20 units. It's going to go down the line, and we're getting to the point of we're just about out. How are we going to explain that to the developer that comes to the podium or to our citizens? Oh, we're all out of water now. We need to be very diligent with our water. We need to budget our water, and we need to be very careful that we allocate it carefully and we do the best planning we can based on the projections that we have before us. Don't get caught in that last corner. And again, the rezonings resulting in increased densities such as this will have a cumulative effect upon the future users. Again, is this rezoned compatible with our money, with the neighborhood? No, it's not. Suburban residential, yeah, lot size analysis and density and that type of thing, but we have relied on suburban residential in this area since 1997, knowing that that's what's going to occur on this property. I'm not saying that person does not have a right to ask for a zone change. I'm just saying, respect who we want within his ability. So, again, thank you very much for your kind consideration of our request to deny this application. Again, we echo the mayor's concerns. We're going to ask our fellow neighbors to limit their comments to new ideas expressed or something that they feel is very important for you to know, and I'd be glad to answer any questions and then my presentation.
Counsel? I think we're going to wait, Larry.
Okay.
And we'll take everybody, and then we'll discuss. If we need to bring you back, we will. Fair enough. Thanks. Great presentation.
Thank you.
And great lead for everybody else. Very fact-driven, not so emotional. We want to know the facts first and foremost. I get the emotion with neighborhood and bigger neighborhoods and all those kinds of things. We get that. Bring us with facts to help us make the right decision. That said, let's go with Charles Flint. And if everybody would speak into the mic and first and foremost, give us their name and address, please, for the record.
Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. Charles Flint, 1203 Tarmigan Drive. In the past, I've sent letters to Sally, Mayor Leiva, David. Recently, in the last 48 hours, I've sent letters to the entire city council. So, you have my letter from initial one six weeks ago to one within the last 24 hours. I highly recommend that we deny the application. I'm not as prepared as Larry, who did an excellent job. But I spent 45 years in occupational health and safety, environmental protection, worker safety, keeping the community safe. I worked with organizations such as Shell Oil, Shell Chemical, Chevron, Lockheed, some pretty major entities. So, I think I know what I'm talking about when I come to public safety. That's what I want to key into. We bought into the Stone Ridge development to build our dream home, which we did, but part of our reason for settling there were the larger lots and smaller traffic. If we develop Asmdoll with two entries and two exits, it's just going to multiply the traffic through Stone Ridge, increasing public safety as a risk to the children and the elderly people who reside there. If he develops the lot with two separate exits and entries, not connected, I don't have a problem from a safety standpoint. But if we're going to do something that has been on the record now for 10, 20, 30 years of not having a connecting road to Highway 67, I want to make sure that the city council does not override that. The traffic on Tarmigan is great, a little heavy with construction, but it's great for retirement living and for kids. Coming from Douglas County, Parker, Colorado, Highlands Ranch, traffic's a nightmare. I don't want to see Stone Ridge develop into a nightmare. And if we take everyone who lives in Northwoods, and we take all the people attending a sporting event at the complex and bring them through Michael Lane, through Asmdoll, into Tarmigan Drive, Stone Ridge Drive, to 67, that's a public risk. That's a public safety risk, and I'm not willing to have the city council or the city take it. So, something new, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to Patricia Stinner.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city leaders, honored public guests. My name is Patricia Stinner. My husband and I live at 1140 Michael Lane, and we share 100 feet... My husband and I live at eleven forty Michael Lane, and we share a hundred feet of subdivision boundary line with the Aspandale parcel. Along that property line, we have special concerns about an existing swale, which is identified in the applicant's map and information that he gave. But we're curious as to how he's going to handle that swale. I've been doing some research on floodplains and it appears that the city may allow construction or destruction or some type of revision to that floodplain. And there are a fair amount of properties that are going to be affected. I have a, a beautiful thirty-inch storm culvert with a drainpipe in the middle of my backyard. And I knew it was there when I bought the property. I'm not complaining. But at this time, even with the frog chokers, not even floods, the frog chokers, we're seeing a lot of erosion and we're seeing a threat of flooding. And so far, we've been able to, to manage it. But we've, we've actually talked to Mr. Butterfield about this. Kip came out in twenty fifteen and looked at it. Sally's been out there. The city is a little bit stretched for engineers and public works directors right now, and I hand it to Kip for, for managing most of that. We have invited CUSP, which is the Colorado, the Coalition for the Upper South Platte, to come out and take a look. And their engineers have been out and they're going to be contacting the city about this. And I have to believe that Mr. Randolph might like to be included with their analysis since that floodplain actually runs through both of our properties. So that's one thing I want to bring up. Let's see, spot zoning. Spot zoning was brought up also at the Planning Commission. And I have to tell you that some of the information delivered at the Planning Commission was not as accurate as it could have been. I have personally been involved with a residential to residential rezoned that resulted in allegations of spot zoning. And the, the project I was involved with is called The Farm at Boulder Valley. And it's an interesting, it's an interesting case and it's not unlike this case, except that we wanted to rezone a thirty-five acre parcel to include five, one and a half to three acre home sites. And the threat of lawsuit was imminent. And so our restitution was to settle out of court by conveying private open space after twenty years to the city and county of Boulder. So you're welcome to look that up. You probably won't find the legal records because we settled out of court. But it doesn't just involve commercial properties. The staff says that the existing, it's feasible to use the existing utilities. Now, the difference between single-family resident, or excuse me, SR zoning and UR zoning, and maybe Sally can correct me on this, I know after I'm done speaking, she can have a rebuttal. But I remember reading that one of the benefits of going from SR to UR is that you get to use the existing utilities. Let's talk about that. My existing utilities were built forty years ago. And I doubt that they considered an increase in density to this Aspandale parcel. I have a concern about that. I don't know from the map that the applicant submitted where he's going to hook into facilities. I'm talking about water lines and sewer lines. I see that one of the, one of the places he mentions, but I didn't exactly see it on the map, it might be there, was connecting to Stone Ridge Village's utilities. And my question would be, did he and Dana actually agree to consider the increased zoning for Aspandale? There was a two thousand and five letter included from Stone Ridge Village's engineers that was an invitation from the applicant to co-coordinate their planning, but there was not a response. So I don't know that whether or not the storm drain, the same one I'm talking about behind my house, was built to accommodate this additional development. And I asked this question. I've asked it each way to Sunday from city employees, from Sally Riley, through a letter to the Planning Commission. And I think I might have, no, I think that's twice. So I presented twice. I wasn't able to attend the Planning Commission meeting, so I missed that. So my question is, staff says it's feasible to use the existing utilities, but there are no cost estimates. What if they're undersized? What's it going to cost the taxpayer? Since if we go to the UR zoning, the applicant has the, the rights to the existing utilities, what's it going to cost the taxpayers to upgrade those utilities should they need that? And I think that needs to be the question answered in facilities, or, excuse me, the feasibility of using the existing utilities. Okay, the last thing, the connector streets, I, I wanted to point this out to counsel because I know this is a lot of information for you. And a lot of us have had about a month to, to refer to it. What you're voting on tonight is not Sally Riley's report, or the staff, staff report, I should say. And if you look at Mr. Randolph's application, you'll see that it doesn't, it doesn't state a lot and it doesn't provide much. We have a talk about open space and we, and, and the applicant speaks to pedestrian access points between multiple subdivisions that are existing. I don't see any access points on the map. I see a historic footpath, and that might be what he's referring to, to pedestrian access points. But this is significant. The reason it's significant is because I have twenty-foot easements that span two, two legs of my, of my flaglot. And I want to know, is it a possibility that those are going to be looked at for access, for pedestrian accesses? I just would like to know. So I don't see that there's a lot of information in the applicant's two-page application. I don't see a lot of information on the plat. I don't see anything in this application that substantiates what Ms. Riley is hoping that this is going to be developed into. As far as the connector street, there's a very small street that spans between two existing houses in the Stone Ridge development. It's called Cobalt Point. When you drive by Cobalt Point, it looks like it's proposed for a lane and a half, certainly not two lanes. It looks like maybe it's an emergency access. If, if, if Northwoods and Stone Ridge Village are connected by a street that snakes down through Aspandale, that connector street is going to become a collector's street. It's going to collect traffic from Meadowwood Sports Complex during events, from the Meadowwood Neighborhood, from the Evergreen Heights Neighborhood, from the Northwoods Neighborhood. And I think that the small, little pilot point lane that dumps into a small neighborhood lane, not into Stone Ridge Village Drive, is, is a real impact on, on our new Stone Ridge neighbors. And I'm concerned about that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have three Butterfields here. Does one person want to talk? Everybody have something to say?
We're all three prepared.
You're all three prepared. Perfect. Let's start with Jane.
I'm Jane Butterfield, and I live in Stone Ridge at eleven eighty-two Tarmigan Drive.
You can pull it down a little bit. There we go.
I guess I'm going to stick with my original plan and talk about the access. To me, I don't think this plot of land was ever considered being any more than ten, just from the, where the access is at. I live in an HOA that has its own covenants or whatever. And, and here's this access that is actually not halfway down, but two-thirds of the way down. And it, and all that traffic is going to be going past ten houses just on Tarmigan. And to me, that is not compatible or harmonious to, to our residents. And I think, and also, it had, there has been discussion on affordable housing in there. And we've discussed from six hundred thousand dollar houses to affordable housing. And I got, received a pamphlet that, on affordable housing. And according to the affordable housing, these are people who have incomes of around thirty-six thousand dollars. And so if they're going to be able to afford a home to be affordable housing, that's not going to be compatible with the rest of the area. And my question is too, if Mr. Randolph can come up with a plan over the next year, why are we having to vote on a rezoning without knowing what is going in there? If he can come up with a plan over the next year, then how about we deal with this rezoning after we know what is going in there and how this is going to be plotted out? We're not, we're expected to accept a rezoning when we have no idea of what's going in there. Not, not one. And I would just request that, that we wait for rezoning until that we know what is going to be in our community. We just don't know at this point.
Great. Thanks very much. I'll try to answer that last question as we move forward.
Good evening, Mayor Levy. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Levy, and members of city council. My name is Amy Butterfield. I live in Stone Ridge Village at eleven eighty-two Tarmigan Drive. About ten years ago, in two thousand and seven, at the age of twenty-five, I earned a master's degree in government with a certificate in public policy from Regent University. So in a sense, I do speak your language. I would like to hit on a note as an example, by request, actually, I asked request from my neighbors who live down the street from me, if I could share their story, which is notable regarding affordable housing. They're from Temecula, California. And several years ago, the city council of Temecula decided to implement affordable housing, or well, what they call low-income housing. Well, they lived in a middle-class, upper to middle-class neighborhood. What was quiet and serene and pleasant turned into a nightmare of crime, rowdiness, and what have you, goes on with crime. Well, it dispersed that middle class. Their neighbors moved throughout the country because they wanted to get the heck out of there. And they moved to Woodland Park to be a quiet retirement community, or a quiet community at that. Their daughter, who's going to be living across the street from us, is moving from Temecula with her two children because of the crime rate. It escalated with this affordable housing slash more low-income housing. As a note for the record, I kindly but firmly beseech you that it is your sacred honor and duty to represent we, the people of Woodland Park. Just as it is my sacred honor to stand before you here tonight, thank you very much for this opportunity. It is also your sacred honor as public servants to represent us, we, the people. And I ask you to reconsider and vote no on this rezoning. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Thanks very much, Amy. Okay, we'll move on to Rock.
I'd like to ask a question. Can you have, when we hear of these people, especially over here, if they move their microphone forward, we can't hear back out here.
We'll do that, thank you.
Could you? I appreciate it because if, I'm only hearing half of it, so I might be repeating what somebody else said. My name is Rock Butterfield, and I live at eight, eleven eighty-two Tarmigan Drive also. I'll address several points tonight, and I don't think these are repeated. We moved here from Phoenix, Arizona. The zoning I saw there was opposite of what I'm seeing going on here. It was in a very rough neighborhood, south of I twenty, I seventeen, and north of South Mountain, if you, anybody's familiar with that area. It was a very trashy area, very poor area. And what rezoning did there was brought in affordable housing for people, for certain people. A house that would cost three hundred thousand dollars in the area where I lived, down there costs less than two hundred thousand. And it was an area covered about probably one or two square miles. So it was a significant amount of change. And what it did was brought back in new restaurants, new gas stations. It developed the area, brought the whole area up in that area, and even cut down crime. One of the things I see here is there are many advantages to all the neighbors if we keep the zoning at SR for this, at least at this time. Maybe at some point it can go, and I would recommend the zoning goes to PUD because of what our experiences have been. There's advantage to all neighbors in this development if the zoning is left at ten houses per ten acres. And if you look at what Sally presented there, our, our lot is one-third of an acre. And, and if you go to UR, it can go all the way down to seventy-five hundred feet. And I think a third of an acre is approximately fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand? Yeah. So I don't like to see it much less than fifteen thousand. It would be more likely to be a benefit to all of the surrounding communities if we kept that. There would be less than fifty percent traffic from this community that is being asked to be developed if they leave it at one acre. There's going to be less traffic. The possibility of lawsuits will increase if the zoning is increased. Because I, I believe of what some of the things that have happened in the past is the reason for that lawsuit possibility. What I see proposed here is a blank check given to the developer. No one, no or little planning for the development, no HOA. That to me is one of the biggest issues here. To regulate what goes on in development after the construction period is over, little regard for those families living in the new traffic areas that will be generated. We have experienced, seeing that the lack of HOA enforcement and enforcement of city codes does to the neighborhood just behind us. Right behind our house, we can sit on our porch and see it, a number of large motorhomes were sitting at one house, sat there for quite a while. And then another neighbor back in there had a large trailer, brought in a bunch of junk and stuff. No city code, no city thing to stop that from degrading that neighborhood back in there. Then another person didn't build, that's, that's what I hear, he didn't build on Tarmigan until the neighbor behind him cleaned up the, the, the lot that was back there. A lot of junk was around. And, and the lots back there have improved since Tarmigan has been building. The house right behind us, fortunately, the people that bought it are rebuilding it, making it look presentable, and cleaned up the backyard where, where our yard butts was up against theirs. And we're right next to that drainage ditch that was talked about. Funny, I would suggest that the city must learn how to manage growth so that disasters or major difficulties don't develop in new growth. It does look like you've done a good job with the motel. There would be some things I'd say about that, but it's not the time, I guess. I would ask you to not approve the, to the plan. And I would ask that we come back later, get a plan, we can see it. And, and I would recommend that Steve goes for the PUD so that we, after ten and twenty years down the road, you have a means of controlling what people do. We've lived in PUDs in Phoenix, and sometimes they're petty, but most of the time, they keep you from having arguments with your neighbors. That's one of the strong points. You have a standard. You don't have somebody building a, a yellow house or a pink house in your neighborhood, bringing down your property values. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, I've got George English. Okay, next, I've got George English. And remember, folks, we're talking about changing from the SR to the UR. Not affordable housing, we don't know what's going in there. So don't surmise, let's keep it on the subject, okay?
All I can say is I don't have property in that area. I walk through that area quite often. I can see the houses on the lots that are there now. I can't imagine a house that size being put on a piece of land half of what they're on now. Which means, of course, there's gonna be smaller houses. That I think is obvious. The other thing, from looking at your map up here, Snowshoe Court would be the obvious way to extend access. But there's houses built in Snowshoe Court. So if people want to get in and out, they have to drive all the way around through the other subdivision. That's an existing impediment. You know, you have to really think about road access. And if you look at the map, you can see it's only about a hundred yards, but that's blocked. You've got houses built there in Snowshoe Court, and there's nothing that can be done about that now. So I do think you need to look at the road access aspects. And a lady mentioned Cobalt Lane being overloaded with other traffic from other subdivisions going through. So I think you have a really, a real problem with road access. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, I'm sorry, before you step down, sir, just for the record, your name and address, we never got that.
My name is George English. I live at eleven twenty-seven Parkview Road in the Forest Edge subdivision.
Thank you very much. Sorry for overlooking that. We will move on to Joe Hurst.
My name's Joseph Hurst, live at eleven eighty-six Tarmigan Drive. Corner of our property backs up to the subdivision that you guys are gonna try to change from the SR to the UR. I was assured, when I was in California, looking at the plot, that that would be ten units. I bought the property based on having ten units behind me, not twenty, or twenty-five, or whatever. Cobalt Lane was supposed to be the only access to that property, I was told by the realtor. So there wasn't gonna be a huge amount of traffic added to our area based on the fact that it was gonna be ten homes in there and one limited access point to it. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got Dan Archer.
Good evening, my name is Dan Archer. I live at twelve nineteen Stone Ridge Drive. And I just wondered one thing from the City Council. If you approve this, what's gonna stop Dana Duncan from wanting the same thing? And I haven't heard anybody talk about that. But if we're talking water, and if he wants to double up his properties, what's gonna happen to all our properties and the cost of the water in the future? Now granted, I'm not gonna be here a hundred years from now, but the idea is we're talking about our community. We're talking about our neighborhood and what we can afford to do. I'm sure there's a lot of people that are retired. We don't get a great income when we retire. So we're looking at utilities, how much it's gonna cost us. And if they double up everything and go to a smaller lot, well, we're gonna end up paying more money. I know the city wants growth, I understand that. But we're already in a community that's already built up the way it is. And I don't, I don't think the ten-acre parcel, because Mr. Randolph said he wouldn't bother the Aspen Grove. Well, how are you gonna get twenty-eight, twenty houses if you don't touch the Aspen Grove? And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more on my list is Carl Anderson. Carl, you signed up for a couple of things. I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak now or not.
Yeah, just briefly.
Repeat the process for us, if you would, please.
Still Carl Anderson, still at six oh two County Road five eleven. First thing I'd like to say, Kip, Wiley, I really appreciate what you do every time I open a faucet, flush a toilet. Protecting our water supply is important. But I do think we need to look at all the facts of this subject and whether it fits the criterias or not. And just go by the facts of the presentations. And I hope with, and with, that whether you people end up with ten new neighbors or twenty new neighbors, that you somehow learn to love and respect them. And not just be the last person to beat through the gate and lock it.
Thank you for that, Carl. Okay, I have no one else signed up for this item, but that doesn't mean you can't come and speak. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? If not, I'm gonna start by having staff answer a number of your questions, and then we'll get back to council. Is that okay?
Yes, sir. I think what I'd like to do, there were some questions on utilities, capabilities, limitations. There was some discussion on Cobalt and the width. I think, Mr. Mayor, you were going to speak to process as it related to making decisions at this point versus zoning after we have a plan. I think our attorney went over that, but we should reiterate what that is. There were some code issues that came up that might be worth visiting. And also, we know that we can't tonight cause a change to a PUD. So with that bit of a lead-in, Kip, talk to us a little bit about the capabilities of the water and sewer lines in that area as they are. And if the infrastructure isn't adequate, who would bear the cost of increasing the capacity of those two utilities?
Anytime there is a extension of a main, there's analysis done by an engineer. And if it's inadequate to serve the development, the developer's responsible for installing the adequate or the capacity to serve that development. So there's no additional cost on other customers for installation of that developer. Fifty years from now, it's the city system when we still maintain that. So the more pipe you put in the ground, the more there is to maintain. But for the initial investment, it's on the developer to install.
And can you speak to the existing capacity of the water lines and the sewer lines to handle the ten or the twenty units?
The existing water mains and sewer mains that are there now, in my mind, are capable of serving ten or twenty units. So I don't have a concern, but that would be verified by an engineer.
Okay, thank you. Sally, if you could speak to Cobalt, its width and its capabilities as a city street. And then also, there was some mention of pedestrian access. What requirements may exist, what limitations, what opportunities exist?
Sure. Cobalt is designed with a fifty-foot road right-of-way. So our standard profile for a road is a twenty-four-foot mat that's centered in that fifty-foot with curb and gutter, two feet on either side. So it's quite adequate to be able to function as a city street and then designed to access this property.
And before you move on to the pedestrian access, just by looking at this map, we can see that Tarmigan's right-of-way is slightly larger than Cobalt. My recollection is that it's sixty feet, and that's because the developer wanted to put in sidewalks. Is that why it is wider than Cobalt?
I don't believe it is a sixty.
Okay.
Road right-of-way. It is up here at Stone Ridge Drive.
Okay.
But Stone Ridge Drive is designed more as a collector's street to be able to tie into Kelly's Road. Tarmigan is a local street.
So Cobalt, though, meets the city specifications for the right-of-way as it's shown on the map?
Yes.
And it would provide the full twenty-four-foot map?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then with respect to pedestrian access, Miss Danner, it would not be utilizing any of your easements. Your easements on your property are specific for utilities and drainage. What they're talking about is potentially having pedestrian access or easements that would be able to connect between Stone Ridge and Northwoods.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, that's all the... Sally, did you have another one?
If I could just clarify, Miss Danner was using the term floodplain. There is no regulated FEMA floodplain in this area. In fact, the FEMA floodplain is quite a ways north of here on the Loy Goulge drainage. So we are aware of the drainage that much of Northwoods drains behind Michael and Tricia's house. It is collected in a thirty-inch pipe that goes down along this property, and then it outlets into this detention pond. A new drainage study will be done for any new development, and that will all be looked at in relationship to our current stormwater drainage criteria manual.
Thank you, Sally. Erin, would you like to talk about what David mentioned instead of me? Because you're better suited.
Sure, and in fact, Sally, I think, had an excellent slide with regard to the development process that would follow zoning, if I understand the question?
Yes.
So, and what would be looked at in that development process? And in fact, Sally's the expert on that. I would defer to her to go over that slide again if that is helpful to the discussion.
Yeah, the city has very excellent development standards at this point. And Stone Ridge is a good example, any of our newer subdivisions. They have been updated, and recent engineering specifications have been updated. The stormwater drainage manual is updated. But the next step would be a preliminary plat where that roads, drainage, utilities, all will be designed according to those engineers' standards. And the preliminary plat would come to public hearings with the Planning Commission and the City Council. Mr. Randolph, though, did talk about two phases. He could potentially do a minor plat on a small corner, perhaps next to the Outlet A, which a minor plat does not extend public utilities or roads into that area. And if they were served from a common driveway, that would be without a preliminary plat, but it would have a final plat that would come to Planning Commission and City Council. So I don't want to be disingenuous and let you know that the absolute next step is a preliminary plat. It could take place as a minor plat without extending those in there. And then, once the plat is, the preliminary plat is approved and the design for all the development is, can begin based on the preliminary plat, then the final plat comes forward, then they're able to sell lots. Each of those lots are reviewed. So we have a zoning development permit, as well as a building permit, and all the inspections, all the way up to COA completion. So in my fifteen years in the planning department, I believe that the city has made great strides to try to have quality development that protects all of our property values.
Great, thanks, Sally. I got another question for you. I know there's a lot of people concerned because there's no PUD. They are, they just don't know what's gonna be there. So run us through the process a little bit, once this happens, if it does. What does the process looking like? Can we get four houses on a half acre? Who will make the decisions? Will planning and council make the decisions, relative to the plat, at least?
The applicant will submit a sketch plan to the staff first. And so it's up to the applicant to decide how they're going to best develop their property. And their interest is going to be value. How will they try to get the greatest value out of the quality development that they want to develop and build over a period of time? They have to consider a market. They have to consider what is the greatest return on their dollar. And so the sketch plan will be looked at by the staff. Certainly, we will take into consider what the neighbors are going to think about that because once it goes from a sketch plan to a preliminary plat, then it is a public review. And we certainly want to make sure that the neighborhood is happy with what that preliminary plat looks like.
Mr. Mayor, you spoke of a number of residences on a half an acre. Sally, what's the minimum, absolute minimum lot size in urban residential?
The minimum lot size is seventy-five hundred square feet. But again, the value is going to be putting a larger home on a larger lot. Because they can use half acre or more, depending upon how they vary those lot sizes. And I would suggest that you look at the Wilderness subdivision, which is on the corner of Kelly's and Rampart Range Road. Mr. Murphy developed that as an urban residential subdivision. And they have half, almost half-acre lots in there.
Great, thanks, Sally. Anything else from staff?
No, I would like to give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal.
Absolutely, this would be a good time for that. Steve, would you like to come forward, once again? We may have some questions also for you.
Steve Randolph, one-two-one-one, Mountain Meadows Drive. I can kinda go through a number of the comments and questions that came up, in the order they came up in, many of which have now been addressed. Or I can entertain questions from council?
Why don't we do both? Why don't you start with the ones that weren't answered, and then if council has any questions for you, we'll go from there.
Okay. I think the biggest thing that came out of several comments from individuals is there's a concern that the character of the neighborhood would be degraded because seventy-five hundred square foot lots are allowed. But they're not required. They're allowed. And Sally pointed out quite correctly, my interest is maximizing the value of the product, not minimizing, diminishing the value of the product. So is it possible to do seventy-five hundred square foot lots? Yeah. Would it be smart? No, absolutely not. But the way our ordinances are prepared, there's nothing in between. There's just two units per acre or one unit per acre. So if you're allowed seventy-five hundred square foot lots, and you have ten acres, and you have two per acre, that's twenty. So my interest would be in getting the most value out of that twenty. Because I can't have twenty-five or thirty. I can have twenty. So to get the most value from the twenty, each lot is gonna be as large as it can be and still provide for infrastructure. The concern at the moment about, we can't see what it's gonna look like because it's not zoned yet to look like what I have in mind. So if it gets zoned to be twenty dwelling units on ten acres, then I'll take a look at the terrain and the access points and start to put together a sketch plan for Sally that shows lot lines and street rightaways. Some of the infrastructure's already there. There's a sewer drain that was connected into the Stone Ridge sewer line years ago when that was going in. And there's other infrastructure in the immediate area that needs to be understood from an engineering point of view. Where's the best access point for underground power? For, where can fire hydrants be located? Where are the sewer manholes gonna go, things like that? These are all things that are fairly expensive to define. So there's not a lot of encouragement to spend the money to define all that stuff, only to be found out later that, oh gee, it got denied. So, there's not a lot of encouragement to spend the money to define all that stuff, only to be found out later that, oh gee, it got denied. So, that's the approach. You get the zoning, then you design the neighborhood to match the zoning that you, that you have. My interest, as I said earlier, is to replicate the character. It would be foolish to not stick with the character of the neighborhood. So, there seems to be a collective concern that that's not gonna happen because it's all gonna be affordable housing and low income housing and crime's gonna be rampant and there's not gonna be ways to keep people from parking motorhomes. I have covenants in the Spruce Ridge subdivision that specifically disallowed motorhomes, et cetera, from getting in the yard. And some people went to the expense to build huge garages to put their motorhomes inside so they could have them at their house. Those are individual choices that the buyer makes and it doesn't take an HOA to make that happen. It just takes a covenant. And the covenants I put together for that neighborhood are quite extensive and protect the property values quite well. You know, conversely, I could say, well gee, the, my, the perceived value of my product is gonna be somewhat based on what the customer looks at when they look at their surrounding areas themselves. So, we're kind of in this together, me and the neighborhood. I have no interest in diminishing their value and I have a concern that if they don't take care of their property, then my value will be diminished. So, it's a cooperative thing that you work together. I don't, it, it just hasn't been a problem in, in my experience. I'm sure there are spots where motorhome is parked in somebody's view and it doesn't get caused to go away, et cetera. But this city has ordinances and things like that that can be brought to bear on unpleasant situations.
Well, and again, you could understand how people feel because they're not sure what's gonna be in there.
Yes.
And that, you know, I would argue, and I, I think I'm right, most of the people here today live in, in homes on about a third of an acre of property in Stone Ridge and in, in, where else? Stone Ridge and, yeah. And these, these are gonna be half acres, or it could possibly be half acre.
Well, you do have to subtract out the rightaway.
Right.
So, if, if we take that example, the graphic on page six is, is a perfect example of how you would go about doing that. You put the lot lines in based on terrain and so forth and you've gotta have the streets, you've gotta have the sewers, you gotta have the storm drains. These are not options. So, once you provide for all that, then you have, what's left is for lots. And if I do just rough numbers, I can put in eighteen thousand square foot lots and still have plenty of land leftover for infrastructure, for rightaway. So, the fact that it's seventy-five hundred feet minimum doesn't say, well, you can't have an eighteen thousand square foot lot, especially if it happens to be one that you want to be a kind of a premier lot. This has got the best view of Pike's Peak, this has got the nicest backyard of Aspens. So, you may get a little bigger and you get more money for it, but then the lot next door is gonna be smaller. But overall, you wanna end up with an average, I'm thinking of around eighteen thousand square feet.
So, Steve, really this is about flexibility. With SR, you were limited in terms of how many lots. But, on the other hand, this does not preclude you having fewer lots. One, one was prohibitive, this one is permissive. SR is prohibitive, UR is permissive.
Right, yeah. It, I mean, it's, it's, it's the number of dwelling units per gross acre. That's what's restricted. So, if you look at the surrounding area, I agree with Larry and all of the neighbors, it's a suburban area. There's no question, it's a suburban area. It is not Brooklyn. So, we call it suburban residential, but then we give it a limitation of one dwelling unit per gross acre. So, then that precludes anything other than that.
And the reason Northwoods subdivision was assigned suburban residential is because of its lot size. And the city did not want to make their lot sizes non-conforming. So, they have fifteen thousand square foot lots, it matches the suburban residential lot size. They're non-conforming with their density. They exceed the density.
Mm-hmm.
Significant.
Thank you.
And it was just moving our zoning nomenclature when we did the overhaul in nineteen ninety-seven so that we applied a different lexicon and standards to the zoning. So, we had to try to make it fit. And the urban residential, the downtown core from here to county road, because it was platted back in the eighteen nineties, much of it with seven, seventy-five hundred square foot lots, that's why we had to create a category, urban residential, that would allow those lots to be legal conforming lots.
If I could add back to that graphic, as I'm looking at it here, to the east, we have nine point seven-six acres with twenty-seven lots. Somehow, that's okay with everybody. Eleven thousand square feet typically. And another with twenty-five lots on ten acres. So, this is not setting a precedent for, for blight. This is just, to me, duplicating the character of the surrounding neighborhoods that are already fixed. Those were fixed by approvals years ago.
And Mr. Archer asked about what would prevent Dana Duncan from coming back and asking for the same thing. Well, first of all, Mr. Duncan, who developed Stone Ridge as a PUD, the limits on PUD is two units per acre, gross acre. He was granted a plan that did not go up to four hundred units, it's three hundred and sixty. But that's because it's got some commercial as well, it's a mixed-use development. But, Mr. Duncan could come back and try to ask for at least those additional forty units. But the staff would look at it just like this one and compare it to the standards and our criteria and determine if it, what has changed in the neighborhood. Is it in character? Is it in harmony? Does it make sense to increase the density that is already approved for Stone Ridge? So, but he can't exceed four hundred altogether, four hundred units in Stone Ridge.
Counsel, questions for the applicant or for any staff? Remembering that when we go to vote, if you vote no, you have to have a reason relative to the criteria that you believe fits or not.
Question on the criteria. Larry Larson made a good point. Where have we codified these criteria? How, how have we come to the six?
And that was explained very well by Mr. Larson. The Seminole case, the case law in Colorado that set the standard for what a zoning decision in Colorado would consist of came out in about, actually it was about nineteen, a little bit before nineteen eighty-seven. And that case said that in order to zone property, there had to be a finding that the rezoning application or the rezoning request was consistent with the comp plan and that the, it was consistent with the changes in the neighborhood. So, what changes in the neighborhood had there been that would warrant this change in zoning? And so, that is why those are incorporated. My, my understanding, I mean, that was what most cities did who didn't codify their own set of requirements. Then in about, probably around two thousand and, actually, two thousand and eight, the state legislature came out with the water supply statute that said that every municipality that was looking at a development permit and included within that would be zoning as it's defined in the state legislature, by the state legislature, had to make sure that there was an adequate water supply. So, that is part of the zoning criteria. And then by practice and historical context, the other criteria were added. And so, consistent with what's been done in the past is what was presented in the staff report.
So, we have a PUD to the east, SR to the west. Could this one be a PUD also instead of a UR? I mean, well, I don't get, I don't see, I don't know what the difference is. I see a planned development, but this sounds like a planned development. So, what is the difference here?
Yes, it could be a PUD just by the fact that it's adjacent to a PUD. But typically, you don't assign PUD to a small tract of land. Ten acres is a small tract. And typically, they're mixed-use or a commercial, large commercial like Walmart, that was a PUD.
So, it's better for the residents around for it to be a UR?
It's a more traditional approach.
Thank you.
But ultimately, the applicant will have to go through all of the additional planning requirements before any development occurs. It will occur, but this is a simple and straightforward, in my mind, rezoning request. That will be followed with a preliminary and final plat.
He's got a mountain to climb, I agree.
And I think that's, that's the point that needs to be understood tonight is those things will all come to pass. The plat, preliminary plat will come forward for public review and comment. If it doesn't match up pretty close to what we're talking about here tonight, then there's gonna be a lot of unhappy people which will impact you guys and things might not get approved in the future if what's brought forward for you to approve in the future isn't consistent with what I'm saying about it now. The character of the neighborhood needs to be protected. So, if I bring in some kind of different plan that doesn't do that, then certainly I wouldn't expect it to be approved.
Right.
There's no guarantees. This is just, this is, allows a plan to come forward, but it doesn't guarantee that it'll be approved.
Yeah, this is the first step of very many steps, so where it could be hit a speed bumper, hit a wall. But I, I agree, it's, it's your land. You own it. So, for the rest of us to tell you how to use your land is disingenuous. What you're asking.
We can.
I, oh, well, no. It's a general statement, okay? But what I see is, is it's you, it's a very reasonable request based on the land around it, the lots around it.
And that, that, that's been my thinking is what, what is reasonable to do with this property? Given what's already been approved around it, seems reasonable to have half acre or so, fifteen to eighteen thousand square foot lots. There might even be a one acre lot that pops up just because it happens to fit nicely on the terrain. Protect the Aspen trees, put, put them on a bigger lot. And that way, whoever buys the lot gets to keep them because they like them there and they aren't likely to cut them down. But those decisions all get made as the terrain gets looked at with the, with the lot lines.
Counsel, remember, we'll have to have this discussion, but if you're not in favor, we've gotta let the applicant know so at one point, if we don't vote in favor of this, at one point, he'll be able to come back and know the reasons why it didn't pass the first time. I don't think we have any other public comment. If we do, would you raise your hand? Those of you that spoke before. I, I appreciate that. Can you hear me? Okay.
Sorry.
Counsel, we will do a better job.
I don't know if I wanna repeat what I said.
We'll do a better job, thank you.
And in this instance, I will certainly side with the neighborhood because there is a tendency to not lean forward into the microphone.
Got it.
And, and I will also say this has gone on for years, so.
So, we're not the first, that's, that's good to know. Okay, one last comment on public comment. Patricia, you're gonna have to come forward. This will be last. Now, we'll give you a minute.
Okay, this isn't a comment, it's a question. Most of what I presented tonight, I would have been able to simply email or talk to my city representatives or city council, but I couldn't because of this thing about if it's going to quasi judicial hearings, I'm not supposed to talk to anybody. So, I just want to thank you for listening to my questions. And Mr. Butter, thank you for answering, and Sally, thank you for answering, and Kip. But that's why I brought them forward. I know it really didn't have to do with the criteria that you're being tested right now for this approval, but I'm wondering if, if there's a way to look into that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, does this mean I can talk to my councilman again?
If we make a decision today, you certainly can. You can talk to your councilman anytime, just not about this issue prior to the time we make a decision.
And that's a matter of state law, so it's not gonna be changed by an ordinance.
Okay, the public hearing's closed. Counsel, Paul?
I'm concerned about the drainage issue. I really am. About erosion, cost evaluation of the drainage, thirty inch pipe, how much water flows through. And when you start adding hard surfaces, non-permeable surfaces, how will this drainage be handled?
You can be concerned about that, it's not part of the criteria.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought utilities and other things were part of the criteria.
On the drainage? Sally?
That comes later.
This is one of those issues, Mayor, that I think the council needs to vote on once before you. But I'm happy to address the question after you do that. I think our counselor would tell us that that's not part of the criteria. But I'm happy to answer the question after the vote or comment on it.
Is that fair?
Is that, is that correct, Erin?
To me, the question is whether or not the increase in density is going to have a material increase in the drainage issues. So, I think it's tangen, I think it's tangential.
The answer is no, because that, the drainage that Miss Danner spoke of is not the drainage system necessarily that will be used by this development. They will be responsible for their own drainage. If they go into, they'll do their analysis to, to see if that pipe has the capacity to take any flow from Aspandale. If it doesn't, they have to increase that capacity per our drainage standards. So, I, I don't know if Mr. Randolph intends to tie into that pipe. If he does and it needs to be upsized, that'll be his responsibility. What we know for sure is that the water that leaves his development can't be more than what historically leaves there. And he handles that through detention, be that a surface pond or underground detention. That part we know for sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? You have a call for a motion? I'm sorry?
And I certainly think that to the extent that council needs some structure for a, a basis for further discussion, it would be the criteria. So, I would just, you know, give council the opportunity prior to a motion just to have that further deliberation. And, and you, you may be done. Okay. I just want to make sure.
We have a motion, then we have discussion, then we have a vote, right?
And that works as well, yes.
Well, that's how we usually do it.
Yeah, and.
I just went, went.
Yeah, it's, discussion after a motion is slightly different than your deliberation pre-motion, but they, you get to the same place, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Please make sure that there will be that post-motion discussion.
Do we have any further discussion?
If, if we were to use the criteria, I, I, I am personally satisfied with the criteria being met in criteria one and two. And, and actually, all of the criteria, but the most compelling to me was criteria three, when you identify the density in the immediately surrounding. When you identify the density in the immediately surrounding lots, um, I, I cannot understand that there would be an argument that this lot would be any different, uh, in, in terms of density. I, I can't speak to what houses may look like in that, uh, parcel once, once it's built out. But in terms of density, I, I don't think that there's any, um, significant di-, difference at all.
Kip?
I'm just gonna echo the same thing. This diagram was very, very important to show compatibility with the area. I certainly see that, and Sally did a really good job doing that. My issue's the water. And I'm sorry, I was, I was on the water committee and I just don't think we can keep authorizing things. And yes, we have the water today, I understand that. But I think at some point we have to say, wait a minute, let's, I don't think we can just keep going ahead. Somewhere down the line, that's gonna be a problem. So I would go no, because I don't think it meets criteria five.
Thanks, Kip. That's, that's helped. John?
No, as we talk about water, I'm just thinking of the earlier action we took with respect to the, uh, microtell. I mean, we're talking.
John, do me a favor.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
So my comment, uh, is that as we talk about water with respect to ten or twenty single-family residences and we just, uh, gave the okay to the microtell, which is another sixty-two tap feet, so, uh, this doesn't seem as important to me with respect to taps.
Well, and speak to the difference, Kip, would you, between the microtell and the residential?
Okay, yes, um, the microtell is sixty-two rooms. It's one commercial tap. And how we, um, perform water planning is we say our residential population supports our commercial growth. So in the factor of water planning, we say that we use, so we can use so much water, and our residents support that. That's support the residential use and the commercial use. So when I, when I do a water analysis, I'll do total water used per however many residents or citizens we have. And that number is how we project into the future. So, for example, if we use, let's just say a thousand acre feet of water. And I know that, uh, each resident uses point one-one-seven acre feet of water a year. That covers the residential and the commercial portion. So, and it's a moving target. Um, if we have more commercial businesses or growth, our residential population has to support that water-wise. Does, does that, are you following?
Well, and, and I should know that, and I recognize the point one-one-seven number. So I'm not concerned at this point whether we're talking about adding additional ten single-family residences.
It, it's important though for us to acknowledge that there is a point in time where we'll have to make hard decisions for any new development. Uh, but why, you know, why penalize one now where we have the water, uh, service capacity?
Yeah, Kenny, help me understand that. For you, you're against because of the water, but this is a, a project that clearly you have plenty of water for now. I, I get what you're saying down the road. Why would you?
I just think ignoring the future, we know that's an issue for the future. We don't know when. It's twenty years from now or fifty years from now. I think we've been through, I've been around long enough. We've been through a lot of these. And I just think there's a point at which we have to say, no, wait a minute, let's, I think that's, you can't trust it.
Oh, that, and.
I just think we read, I, I've read that personally, that I think we have to step up and say no.
And, and it's something that we'll have to consider when there's a, a new request for another multifamily unit.
Exactly, exactly.
I guess we have a very good discussion.
Until we come up with more water resources and Kip, enlighten us, we, we have more resources coming in, if we get the reservoir built, if we do other things, that can change everything. But right now, we have to deal with what we have.
Good point. Anybody else? Before we move forward, are we going to discuss before, after?
We've been discussing.
Okay, what else do you want to discuss? We won't discuss after unless you need to.
Um, I'm disinclined to, uh, go forward with this. Um, I've got several reasons, um, I'm, I'm unconvinced about preserving open space. It's, it's obviously not, uh, it's, it's contrary to that. Uh, the bigger issue for me is unsafe connector out of here. You've got a landlocked portion without a connector to it. Even if you put those two connectors there, you've got a huge snake getting out of there. And mostly I'm concerned about fire access, emergency exits, fire emergency, which is, as we know, that's right in the middle of fire country. Uh, the other presentation, uh, given by the, uh, um, Mr. Larson, uh, with one point one eight, uh, talks about respecting, uh, other property, uh, joint objectives. Uh, I, with seventy-five people objecting, uh, it is a part of that consideration. But my major consideration is similar to this, or Councilman Matthews, is the water long-term. And, and bigger issue for me is the safety issue, uh, with the lack of a connector there.
Well, uh, duly noted, but there's no connector yet. It's, it's not what we're considering yet.
And it won't be in this parcel.
We, well, we don't know what we're looking for. It can't be, it's impossible.
But, but regardless, if it's S R or U R, there will have to be an access road into the parcel.
It will be a street. Um, my, 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 uh, comment is based on, uh, just, uh, measuring the distance to an actual connector out of that situation. If there was something going on the top end of that, that would be obvious, easy access point. If you've got city streets going through, what, half mile or so till you get to a connector type of thing, um, that plus the open space, plus, plus the long-term water issue would be my contrary.
And, and, and I don't disagree with that, but I'm still confused about, it, there's, this request doesn't even address a connector. It's, it's simply a request to change from one zone to another. The connection and the street situation will be addressed later in the preliminary plot and then follow.
Yes, and, and I can see exactly what will happen will not be a connector. So I'm looking down the road.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, with, if, with that logic, then we should tell Dana and stop the vote. Because look at his snake way of getting back to those houses way back there. So I, I don't think that's an adequate reason. And if we don't pass this, then he's still gonna build one acre lots. So it's still gonna be built. So it's rather ten or twenty.
Or somewhere in between.
Somewhere in between.
Did I get a call for a motion?
Move to approve.
For a second?
Second.
No, motion in the second. Any other conversation, questions before we move forward? Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
No.
Swinier?
No.
Motion carries four-three.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Thank you to everybody that came. Um, remember now that this has been approved, but moving forward, we'll still ask you to come to council. When the plat comes, there'd be many more opportunities for you to express your concerns, positive or negative, as we move forward. But thanks very much. Great discussion. We have about twenty minutes before we have to finish this meeting or vote to move forward. So we'll see what we can do. We'll wait till five till if we go that far. We have no new business tonight. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Would anybody? Okay, we'll move on to reports. Mayor's report. Let's start with the mayor's cup. The mayor's cup is the fifth, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
The twelfth, excuse me.
Twelve.
The twelfth of August, it's a great event. Young kids, old kids, and old people. Uh, we'll be running in that, but it's, it's a blast for everybody and it's one of the, one of the great events that our Park and Rec Department puts together. So August twelfth, I believe it starts about eight o'clock. I'll have better information on that at our next meeting. Tomorrow, Friday, Woodland Park Farmer's Market, eight to one, Memorial Park, which is the greatest venue ever for, for a farmer's market. Saturday, this Saturday, from ten to one, the e-cycling, recycling event at Keller Wil-, Keller Williams Building. There's a small fee for electronics recycling. Then a week from Saturday, the twenty-ninth, Woodland Park High School, all-school reunion from eleven to three at Memorial Park and seven to eleven at the Cultural Center. Also on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, is the Coach D Scholarship Golf Tournament at Shining Mountain. And we've got a number of players so far, but we could sure use more. Helps to provide scholarships for, for kids that are high school. Third, uh, excuse me, Tuesday, August first, is the National Light Out at Memorial Park. Miles, you wanna chat about that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're just looking forward to a great showing of everybody. We've got a lot of great public support here. Uh, we had somewhat between two thousand and four thousand people. It was kinda hard to tell last year, but, um, we went through a lot of sandwiches and we're looking forward to having a really good event this year.
And it is a great event. How much, in two years, it's, it's grown like crazy.
It, it's huge compared to our first time when we had about fifty people. And we're into the thousands now, so we're really trying to get up for it.
That's, that's another great event. Okay, Thursday, August third, from eleven thirty to one, Chamber Luncheon Learn, Finding Facial Freedom. Workplace Edition at the U Pass Cultural Center. That's August third. Finding facial freedom. I hope I'm reading that right. Facial, excuse me.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a kind of massage therapy.
It's not facial, it's facial.
To release heat.
Great.
Can we apply some now?
I know, I know I need it right now. For sure. Uh, fortunate enough today to join the other mayors in the community, in our region, in Colorado Springs Business Journal Luncheon. And I'll just say this, don't go into any specifics, there's really no need to. We've got a great group of mayors in our region and led by John Southers in Colorado Springs that work together well, see the, the idea of regional, regional, regional. And so we're lucky to be, to be part of it. And I can tell you this from the people that I talk to, Woodland Park is held in very, very high esteem by people throughout the region. And so congratulations to all of you for that. But, um, heard nothing but great things about Woodland Park this morning. You know, from the mayor's standpoint, that's, that's pretty cool.
You look good on K R D, you're, by the way.
No one's ever said I look good, so I appreciate that. Okay, we will move on. Carol?
I have nothing.
Val, I have something. I have a hand up for that one. A bigger report than usual, so I'm gonna try to whip through it here. Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is busy working on planning suggestions for connectivity or pathways in downtown Woodland Park. The central hub being Memorial Park, uh, going out to Bergstrom Park, Cavalier, Crestwood, Kavanaugh, Lions Park, Meadowwood Sports Complex, Memorial Park, Red Mountain Adventure Park, uh, Woodland Park Library, U Pass Cultural Center, Colorado Springs Christian School, Columbine Elementary, Gateway Elementary, Woodland Park High School, Woodland Park Middle School, the Trails, uh, American Discovery Trail, Centennial, Level Bell Stro- Trail, and the Aspen Valley Ranch and Fountain Creek Greenway. So we're working on connectivity suggestions to bring to, I'm not sure what. Anyway, that's what we're working on with Parks and Rec. Main Street, E B C is going to all downtown businesses and doing surveys together, data to better assist them. We're, that's an ongoing project for the next month or two. Uh, U Trail Stampede Rodeo, which was supported by Main Street, we had fifty to a hundred full-time county volunteers, worked hundreds of hours of compensation-free effort, put on the sixty-first U T S R rodeo, July seventh through ninth. Those hundreds of hard-working volunteers were left out of the, were unnamed in yesterday's Courier Post rodeo purporting in lieu of a single volunteer. And I want to thank specifically my wife, Sherry, who I actually drag along. She doesn't drag me along. I drag her along to all these things I volunteer for. And the Newell family, who did tremendous job, uh, in addition to a, a whole bunch of other extraordinary volunteers left unmentioned. Unfortunately, because the Courier, uh, wh-, whose fault it was, who knows, uh, published the wrong start date at three P M. Many people showed up at three P M, which was when, was when the rodeo ended. So, uh, that actually started at one P M. So we'll, uh, try to do a better job next year. We've got a new rodeo committee for two thousand eighteen, form a better plan. And hopefully we'll get a big report like, uh, the Courier put in for the other two rodeos in the area, where we only got a sixteenth of a page. We'll work on getting a better, uh, presentation into the Courier next year. Uh, I, I was asked by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for a, a C M L conference, uh, report, so I'm gonna whip through this. Uh, dr-, uh, some of the subjects I looked at were drones are coming fast and the local codes are trying to catch up to this reality. This and other attorney-focused presentations I attended were instructive to our future. Searse's motivational luncheon presentation by former Bronco star Terrell Davis, as well as most other presentations, demonstrated to me why lapel mics on a council's deus member is best to have a complete capture of the historical record for our public meetings, thus eliminating those who don't speak close to a stationary mic stand. It's a low-cost solution, by the way, and we use them in my vocal groups. Another topic, historic preservation with economic development. Uh, for Wheatridge Ridge Project, uh, as a demonstration, showed all the pitfalls and hoops to jump through with history Colorado funding that has been, uh, I reported that to Sally Riley. She, uh, she and I laughed along with some of her anecdotal, uh, experiences with that. Dola presentations on new opportunities were instructive as usual. Main Street benefits greatly from Dola, as well as the Demographics Office updates for council's benefit. Cybersecurity and Fire District presentations were also very instructual. Several C M L presentations, speakers, mayors, and exhibits emphasized future viability of a municipality being and providing superior speed of one gigabyte plus broadband through the best carrier, which is currently fiber optics. Woodland Park is very low-speed now. Many present-day residents, uh, these are findings that, uh, were universal in all these presentations. Many present-day residents demand high-end broadband as they are working from home-based business in a much greater percentage every year. The city of Woodland Park be, would be well advised to take these factors into consideration to attract high-end businesses, forward-thinking residents, employees, and employers. Without highest-speed broadband, these employers and residents will seek alternative communities that are already providing it now or soon, and there are several. Many low-cost and are low-cost, cost-efficient capitalization funding vehicles are available to facilitate high-speed broadband to every Woodland Park resident and soon. No need to wait years or decades as these delays will lose these opportunities to more forward-looking locales forever, quote-unquote. High-speed, uh, streaming demands of wireless homes and devices and the four K TVs that are currently in vogue will restrict considerations when the high-speed broadband is unavailable. The city may be wise as just to facilitate open-market competitors to provide this level of service. Fiber service with a s-, city assistance in permitting, rights of ways, et cetera, all to be determined. Uh, city council will have, city, the council and the city will have a presentation by experts on its overall subject on August ninth, two thousand seventeen, at fourteen hundred. I intend personally to keep this, on this for the sake of the city's future at every opportunity. I should feel it should be a very high priority project for Woodland Park. These are all, uh, the findings that I got from C M L. Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
No, thank you, and thanks for your leadership on broadband. Um, well, Jane's doing things, there's a bunch of people, David's doing things. There's a lot, bunch of people doing things. It was really helpful for me to go to, there are all kinds of activities all over the state that are really pushing hard on this, and I think we would be advised to stay on top of it. Kenny?
Nothing.
Paul?
Thank you, Val. Very constructive. Um, I have one thing. The police department gives statements, so I hope that we can get into that at a later session.
I do have a report on that this evening, and it's on the agenda.
Thank you very much. No?
I have nothing.
Thank you, John?
Nothing.
Okay, we brought to our subjects.
I, I do have one additional item. I want to clarify for the record that the motion that was made on the rezoning was based on the findings that were in the staff report and presented by the staff report. And I just want to make sure that, that is.
Yes, that's exactly what I meant to say.
Okay, that i-, and that is typically how that motion is made. So I just want to make sure that's fine with the motion maker and the second. No? Correct? Those were the findings of base, okay. And then, just, just so that the record is clear, I want those. And then, just, just so that the record is clear, I want those four, um, yes votes to confirm that that is the basis for their yes vote.
Confirmed.
Thank you. And I apologize for that, and, uh, I will knock it up to the lateness of the hour.
Plus, you told me three times already to do that, and I didn't, so, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Jane?
Jane Manon, Special Projects. Um, couple things, as we were, as I was leaving the office today to go to the Aging in Place meeting, um, got an email, CDOT has completed a left-turn study at Fairview and West. They apparently did that this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, the rec- the comment that we got back was that the, uh, study did not warrant protected left-turn phasing based on the delay for people turning left at, um, Fairview and West. Um, they also told me that they have completed an accident review, which also indicated no need for protect- protected left-turn phasing there. Um, we're gonna ask them again to do that once school starts, so we're not, we're not giving up just yet. Um, tomorrow at the farmer's market, look for Karen Valdez, the new manager of the Aquatic Center. Um, she's got some information available. We're looking for, um, lifeguard staff for the aquatic center, so definitely check that out. Aging in Place meeting tonight, there is a final report, uh, for the, um, the initial, uh, group on Aging in Place that's available on their, uh, website. Main Street is working on the installation of a sign at Bergstrom Park for the rest area. People see the rest area one mile and apparently can't find the bathrooms. Um, so that's hopefully going in here very soon. Um, we are also working on kicking off our cities and towns celebration, which is always scheduled through CML every year in September. Um, leading up to that week, we want to thank city workers, who usually don't get attention, for the work behind the scenes and often those things that we just don't even think about. Tonight, we wanna thank our city council behind-the-scenes person, Deputy Clerk Chrissy Stapleton, who is literally behind the camera at city council meetings, making sure the meetings are documented. And as we saw tonight, fighting with a temperamental, um, uh, long-term issue with the, uh, the sound system. And, uh, she gets those meetings documented, gets them on YouTube, and we just wanna say thank you and remind everybody to thank the city worker.
Okay, thanks, Jane. My report is twofold, one is the status on the filling of the two vacant police officer positions. Council will recall that during the budget process, we didn't fill those two positions. I've looked at the budget very closely with Mike, I've looked at where we are from a revenue perspective. Uh, we're ahead on revenue slightly, we're, uh, ahead actually on expenses, meaning we've spent less than what we thought we were going to. Bottom line up front, I would be seeking permission from council tonight to immediately advertise and fill one of those vacant positions. As we move forward through the next few months, as I begin looking more closely at the budget and preparing, I will hope to come back to you in September with a recommendation to fill that second vacant position. But for now, I'm, I'm comfortable, uh, with seeking your permission to fill one of those vacant positions.
Do we need a head nod?
Uh, you know, it was part of the budget process, which we adopted by ordinance, so I would ask the council to vote on that or give a head nod of the head. I need consensus to do that.
Can I ask a good question? I'm sorry? Can I ask a question?
Who's due?
Miles?
That much time?
No, I know, I know, that's. Uh, Miles, the services is not now being done that, uh, this vacancy filling would assist? Is that, that's not a very clear question. What services are not being done at this point that?
It's hard to quantify that. I would say that, um, we have changed from being proactive and being out and being more visible to being much more reactive. Um, currently, the officers spend a lot of time in the office playing catch-up with the reports because they don't have enough, um, other officers to share the load. It's been duly noted within our municipal courts that our traffic tickets have dropped by some level of magnitude. Um, so we are not in a proactive manner right now doing up these jobs. Uh, we are more reactive, just trying to stay caught up. For example, the officers have had about twenty-four arrest warrants and search warrants that they've had to write within the last three weeks. They have about two to four hours per one, and so that's time that they're not out there actually on the street. So, currently, the two officers in uniform back there are the only two officers working. And, uh, I did not ask them to be here, this is that important.
They're, they're not serving warrants when we.
They are, they are absolutely not, but at the same time, they're, I know they're wearing down, they're getting tired of working twelve-hour shifts, so.
The, one of, a good example is on the fourth of July, we had quite a few people who were popping fireworks within the city. The cops were chasing them down and telling them to stop, but did not have the time to issue citations because they were getting the call for the next one.
John?
Well, before I nod my head, I would like for, uh, Mike to tell us, what's his best estimate for the first six months of the year with respect to the general fund reserve? I think the number we finally agreed to was something like two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand or something like that.
It's two-fifty oh-four-nine or something like that.
Two-fifty? All right, so how did we do during the first half of the year? I certainly know that tax revenues are up. I don't know about expenses, we're telling you that forecast, all right, so. Where are we now, and where do you expect to be at year-end, Mike?
So, mayor and council, um, like David said, our un- unassigned unrestricted fund balance in the budget was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's a number that we decided on. Um, with revenues being higher and expenditures typically coming in less at year-end, it would be at least two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's how it works out. One thing, though, you may remember when the audit was given, there was a change in the Tabor Reserve. So, that is different. In our budget, we had a Tabor Reserve of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand planned. However, because of the sales tax revenue for the school, um, being considered a city sales tax, we had to include the expenditure to the revenues for that to our Tabor calculation, Tabor Emergency Reserve calculation. So, that impacts the unassigned, uh, fund balance. So, what I would say is, is adding one police officer position, knowing where revenues are at at this time, and knowing also that expenditures are typically less than what we budgeted. The unassigned fund balance, I don't have an exact number, uh, but I would say it's still gonna be close to two-fifty, maybe more.
How about the Gallagher Amendment?
Gallagher Amendment, that is not impacted in two thousand seventeen, it impacts two thousand and eighteen. Um, looking at two thousand and eighteen, you know, I've kinda done some preliminary projections for a twenty-eighteen budget. I'm still seeing about a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar unassigned fund balance. Um, if revenues continue to track the way they are right now and expenditures hit the budget that we had, we budgeted, again, the, more than likely, the less.
All right.
Thank you.
I would like to put a motion out there to, oh, to authorize, uh, David to advertise for that vacant police position.
Second. Suzanne?
Shaffer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes, sir.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion yes.
Thank you very much, council, your community appreciates it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you all for being here this evening.